Good evening Wichita and welcome to all of you to our first nighttime meeting of 2025. We'll call this meeting to order. With us this evening is Reverend Ben Staley of Chapel Hill United Methodist Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and we ask that you please stand for both.
Let's pray together. Oh Lord, how thankful we are that you keep your promises to be a present help in all times of trouble. And you come to us in times when we need you. As you've promised, be with us tonight as a wonderful counselor, an eternal father, mighty God, and a prince of peace. May your peace be present here. Help those, we pray, who are victims of recent storms and tornadoes and watch over us as storms are coming yet again. And we pray your blessing on first responders, give them safety and strength. We give you thanks for helping us to also get astronauts back home and the rescue mission was a success. We know that our mayor and city council members and city leaders are an important mission here and we give you thanks for their leadership that comes with vision, integrity, sensitivity, wisdom, and compassion. We ask that you would watch over our guests who are visiting our city for the tournament. Give us all a heart to care for one another, to look for good and not for trouble, to be at our best for this city, for one another, and for your call to give of ourselves as you have given to us sacrificially generously and with the heart and mind of Christ to act with love for our neighbors. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Staley, appreciate that invocation. Ms. Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of regular meeting, March 4th, 2025.
Council members, are there any items to be pulled? I see none and no corrections, so I move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting, March 4th, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes seven zero. Ms. Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and proclamations. Proclamations tonight are Transgender Day of Visibility, Developmental Disability Awareness Month, and Into the Light Day.
Ms. Clerk, can you please put this in the minutes? I respect the will of this council and my four colleagues who voted in favor of the first proclamation, Councilmember Tuttle, Johnson, Ballard, and Hoheisel. Since this is a first for the city of Wichita, and I know each of you is passionate about this, I'm going to yield the floor to any of you who would like to have the honor of reading the first proclamation.
I'm not really sure what's going on here, but being the only council member that wasn't personally asked, it would be my honor because I represent everyone. Mayor, you ran on all for Wichita and it's disappointing you're not showing unity today.
I'd like to read the proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, Transgender Day of Visibility, celebrated annually on March 31st, honors the resilience, achievements, contributions of individuals who are transgender and gender nonconforming individuals, highlighting their vital role in our community. Whereas fostering visibility and belonging for transgender residents strengthens Wichita's commitment to inclusion of all individuals, research demonstrates that businesses and communities that prioritize inclusion experience greater economic growth, improved productivity, and faster access to broader market connections. Whereas, the city of Wichita values every resident and strives to create an environment where everyone, regardless of gender identity, can thrive, live authentically, and feel a sense of belonging. Whereas, visibility is a powerful tool in combating stigma, challenging misconceptions, and embracing a culture of understanding, dignity, respect, ensuring that all citizens feel seen, heard, and valued. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim March 31st, 2025, as Transgender Day of Visibility. In the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to celebrate the contributions of transgender residents, advocate for inclusion, and work towards building a more equitable and prosperous community for all.
I'd like to ask whoever would like to accept the proclamation to come down for a picture and invite any of my colleagues that would like to join me. And it appears this hasn't been signed, so I'm going to go ahead and sign it. Would you like to share a few words?
Thank you. Hi. Transgender Day of Visibility is an opportunity for all of us to celebrate transgender people across history and culture. But even as we celebrate, we find ourselves under attack. There are elected officials in both Topeka and Washington who have dedicated themselves to destroying transgender identity and removing it from the public square, retreating instead into middle school science and magical thinking. They would have you believe that trans existence is both a fantasy and a crime. And while some of them, many of them, do it with malice in their hearts, many others do it out of fear of the different or of the unfamiliar. But whatever the reason, the war that is being waged on the transgender community across our state and our nation is doing real damage to our families and friends and neighbors and colleagues right here in Wichita. I think we're going to take a picture in a few moments. And I think that illustrates my bigger point here, I think, really well, because I think there's something fascinating about capturing the confluence of an eternity of events in a single image. Case in point, all of us have different backgrounds, experiences, and stories. All of us have taken different paths, so to speak, to get to these chambers here tonight. And yet, here we all are, all together. And we're going to get a picture to prove it. Now I'd invite you to consider in a similar way photographs of Nazi book burnings, like this one that I hold here. These government sanctioned book burns included specifically content about transgender people, reducing generations of knowledge and history to smoldering ash. This image, this fleeting moment, captured forever, is the culmination of a lifetime of the intentional and the well-intentioned, the savage and the silent. In the words of the indomitable Marsha P. Johnson, "History is not something that you look back at and say, 'It was inevitable.' It happens because people make decisions." Now, there are no book-fueled bonfires burning in Old Town Square tonight, and there isn't yet a pink triangle on your gay son's gold star ID, but there are those in this room and on this bench who would rather forget that we have been there and we can be again. I'll leave you with this. There exists a well-known adage, "Be the adult you needed as a child." And when I was a child, I desperately needed to know that I wasn't alone and that there was space for me to exist. And so I stand here tonight, not only as a trans woman, but also as a college graduate, a small business owner, and a military veteran. And I stand here as visible as possible to let that girl who is watching this at home on her bedroom TV know that even though she is scared to death to live her truth, that she is not alone and that there is a future for her. I want to thank a majority of the members of the Wichita City Council for giving me this opportunity and for being not only allies, but accomplices, actively aiding and abetting in the official recognition of transgender people and our right to exist the same as every Wichitaan. And to those who would stand in opposition or even turn a blind eye in hopes of trans people just going away, time will tell your story. And in fact, it already has. A world without transgender people has never existed and it never will. And erasing us from government websites and educational curriculum and professional institutions does not mean that we are not here. It simply means that you are afraid. Happy Transgender Day of Visibility Wichita and Kansas and transgender people everywhere. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is Ability Point and we ask the members of Ability Point to please come forward. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas intellectual and developmental disabilities are conditions which affect statistically more than 7,000 Wichita children, adults, and their families, many of whom wait on long lines for needed services and support. Whereas public awareness and education enhances a community's understanding of issues affecting people living with developmental disabilities. Whereas recognition of the contributions of individuals living with developmental disabilities is an effective way to overcome negative stereotypes and eliminate physical and attitudal barriers to full participation in all aspects of community life, including education, recreation, and employment. Whereas the See Me For Me campaign aims to highlight the joy, gifts, and talents that this population brings to our communities, employers, schools, and houses of worship. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, mayor of the city of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Developmental Disability Awareness Month in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of intellectual and developmental disabilities and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people to live full productive lives within our community."
Good evening. On behalf of not only Ability Point, but all of the IDD providers in our community, we greatly appreciate the ongoing support of the city of Wichita. Since our very beginning in 1953, the city of Wichita has been a huge supporter and advocate in helping us to develop programs and helping our individuals to be a part of our community. The See Me For Me campaign is simply that, making sure that people see the people that we have are beyond their disabilities. They are our neighbors, our coworkers, our classmates, our teammates, and they want to be active and involved in our community as much as possible. This last year, we were able to participate with Wichita State University's Photo Voice Project. As you came in, you may have saw the display just outside the door, and it represents about 20 or so of our self advocates. And they asked them to come together and take a picture, and a picture's worth a thousand words, something that shares their joy. We've got a couple of other participants, Audrey and Chris, that were a part of that. And I'd like to ask Pat, Chris's mom, to come and share just a little bit about that.
Good evening, everyone. My son is Chris, yes Down syndrome, and he did take part in that WSU Photo Voice Project. The participants were given cameras with the simple instruction to take pictures of things that bring them joy. When they finished, they did a private interview and shared about their pictures and why they took each one. Chris took pictures of family, friends, food, lots of food, things that probably bring us all joy. He also took pictures of things like his large DVD collection and his iPad. But the surprising thing is that Chris and many of the other self advocates who participated took pictures of things related to their job. How many of us can say that working brings us joy. When Chris graduated from high school and was on the waiting list for services for six years, he lost much of his joyous spirit. Through his current work at Goodwill, he has regained that. He is so proud of his job, earning a paycheck, and looks forward to going to work. Proposed changes from the state could limit or change Chris's work program, so we've been actively advocating to protect the IDD service system. Chris has also grown up with programs through Ability Point, formerly known as the Arch of Cedric County, and what a treasure that is. From age five to forever, it is a unique resource and community of support that you can never age out of. In the ever-changing and challenging world for those with intellectual disabilities and their families, Ability Point is a constant, there in good times and bad. Eighteen years ago during the summer, I was facing a cancer diagnosis, surgery, and chemo. Because of Ability Point, Chris was able to keep a normal routine, having fun at the Yes Program and surrounded by caring staff and friends. We all so appreciate the city of Wichita's support and help bringing awareness to the strengths and talents of those who we love who are living with developmental disabilities. Thank you.
May please ask the representatives of Guiding Paws ICT to come forward at this time. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas Guiding Paws ICT was founded in 2009 by advocates of the blind community and led by Andrew Crane. Whereas, the mission of Guiding Paws ICT is to raise awareness in the community about the blind and those living with low vision. Whereas the independence and freedom gained by working with a service dog led Andrew to create Guiding Paws ICT, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Whereas Guiding Paws ICT works with a team of dedicated board members to show support to low-vision and blind members of our community. This year, Guiding Paws ICT will be rolling out Into the Light, a program that highlights living with blindness. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, mayor of the city of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim March 20th, 2025, as Into the Light in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to show support by attending the presentation at the Garvey Center on March 20th, 2025." Andrew.
Thank you. And I encourage everybody to come out on March 20th to the Garvey Center. We're going to be showing some new technology and hopefully I will see a big crowd at the Garvey Center. And that, so, thank you and please support Guiding Paws ICT. I'm Andrew's dad, but I'm also a proud chairman of our Guiding Eyes ICT. And as a nonprofit, we are proud to, this year, as soon as I get finished working on it, but we're proud to present a trailer that is called Into the Light. It's a program that will help folks to realize what it's like to be blind or have low vision, but it's also a presentation that will hopefully help us realize that no matter what our disability, whether we're blind or low vision or what it might be, that we are all people and we all have rights. And so I know as a father of two adult children now that have disabilities, I am so glad that I live in the city of Wichita. We have been helped so many times by this city. And you that live here in this city should be proud of what the city of Wichita is doing, not just for us as citizens, but doing for our disabled citizens, our blind citizens, people with other needs and stuff. We live in a really good city. And I grew up in Michigan and I've lived there for 24 years before moving here to Wichita, being replanted. And we've lived here now 45 years. So I'm not a Michigander anymore. I have to call myself a Wichita now. Thank you.
Ms. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Special presentation, NEXUS reporting annual data for programs that receive city and county support.
Good evening. What a fun evening to be here. I'm excited. I'm really hard pressed to follow all that, but I'm delighted for a minute of y'all's time. My name is Mary Beth Jarvis, president and CEO of NEXUS. We're at 245 North Waco. And serve, there we go, serve entrepreneurs. A lot of people talking about their passions tonight and me too, because we work on basically the grow your own part of economic development. We are here to help energize entrepreneurs who frankly have the superpowers in our community to improve their own lives, grow businesses, serve the market, and expand our economy in a way that is changing both for individuals and for our community. So the city of Wichita, over the course of the last year, was helpful in matching some federal and regional funds that came into the area to help spur three different programs that NEXUS has run for the past few years. So I'm here today to say thank you for that support, which took place in 2023, 2024, and present to you the results of your investment in those programs. So if we can go one slide, do I control? Keyboard, there we go. There we go. So these are the three programs that the city's $100,000 helped support. And again, you all were about a 10% matching of about $1 million in federal and regional funds that came into the area, including from the Kaufman Foundation up in Kansas City. It was very, very helpful to go to those entities and affirm that our local officials and our local leadership understood the value of what they were helping fund in our community and in our state. So thank you for that partial matching. The Customer Traction Cohort is a program that was partially supported by the city's funds. Twenty startups a year, so young, early-stage companies, some of them in high-tech, sort of high-growth innovation-based arenas, but frankly spanning all industries. These are folks with growth on their minds. So whatever industry, whatever business they are, they want to expand those and be job creators and grow their businesses. This is a really in-depth program, three months' worth of weekly coaching. They do flex experiments to hone their go-to-market strategies. Bi-weekly workshops we hold together as a group so they can build community. This entrepreneurship thing is a lonely business and we have found that they thrive when we can find commonality and give them tools together. The second program that this matching funds helped support was the Next Stage Enterprise Engagement Series. Engagement Series. Large enterprises exist on a different plane from the small businesses that are trying to grow through selling or collaborating with them. So we threw this program together, unique across the country. In fact, they're getting ready to hire us to start it in Kansas City, starting this year, so clearly we're on to something. We take large enterprises from Coke and Cargill to Everji, but also the city, the county, the school district. How do these small businesses who don't speak big company, they don't even know how much insurance they need to have in order to put a proposal in before the city or in with a company that is large in order to grow their businesses? So they get provided with a playbook, workshops, unprecedented access to the folks who are the decision-makers for these large enterprises, and it's a springboard to grow their businesses. And some of you who have attended our culmination for that event that happens during Wichita Startup Week, it is this amazing marriage of scrappy entrepreneurs and our communities' leading enterprises, and it really is sort of a one plus one equals 11 kind of effect. The third area of programming that this funding helps support was in the realm of capital. So Accelerate Venture Partners is our angel capital syndicate, individuals around the region that write their own checks, use their own money to get behind the success of these startups. And the Accessing Growth Capital Series, which is a schooling up of entrepreneurs that want to navigate the world of early-stage capital. We help make them more credible, more confident, and more prepared to grow their businesses through the use of growth capital. So how'd we do? We set up six metrics with y'all and I've got on here the first three of those. We had a goal within our agreement with city of Wichita that we'd sit down 200 times per year with, for technical assistance or coaching and resource sessions with startups. We blew that out of the water over the course of the three-year period. The number of startups served with our in-depth programs, these multi-week, multi-month dig-in, get them all the way up to pitching our angel group, get them through the coaching, get them in front of the enterprises. We had a goal to do that with 25 companies per year. We actually hit almost 250 over the course of the three years. Group education that one to many find these topics that entrepreneurs are commonly stumbling over. What the heck is AI? How do I market digitally without going broke? We thought we'd convene about 30 of those per year, ended up being almost 240 total over the three-year period. Our last three metrics involved mobilizing private capital, so our facilitation with your help, but other people's check writing. Our goal was to mobilize $500,000 per year and leverage $2 million of other people's money outside of our group, our angels, our local community. You can see we did 4.685 million mobilized and leveraged more than $227 million. And again, that's private capital that city of Wichita's investment helped unlock for companies in our region trying to grow. Our angel group, one of the metrics we set up was, do we have an angel group that thrives? Frankly, that's not happening around the country and our group is an exception to that. We have two angel groups up in Kansas City that frankly just went into a coma because they couldn't figure out how to recruit new angels and keep it revitalized throughout the course of these very tough capital years over the last 48 to 52 months. So we committed that we'd have 30 members at any given time. We actually ended last year with 49 members and a total of 78 active investors who've got a check written and a portfolio with us investing in regional startups. And then lastly, we had a goal that 50 jobs per year with your help would be created or retained, and we actually hit almost 1,200. So 84 bucks a job, guys, for the money you invested. So what that brings to our economy and our community, we hope is not lost on you. And what is not lost on me is the gratitude that our team and our community should feel that the city of Wichita, alongside its partners at Sedgwick County, alongside the larger dollars from the Federal Economic Development Administration, and private dollars from the Kaufman Foundation and other corporations in the area, what you're doing to invest in entrepreneurs and innovators. As I understand it later tonight, you'll have the chance to consider partnerships with my colleagues at Weba and at Create Campaign, Wendell and his team at Weba, Christina and her team at Create Campaign. We work alongside them in the trenches with a variety of entrepreneurs who, again, are in the lonely journey rowing their boats to be tomorrow's great businesses and tomorrow's great job creators. And I'm delighted to be alongside them and hope that the council will consider engaging with those groups favorably. Thank you so much for your time this evening. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mary Beth. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. No question, I just want to say congratulations to you and your team. These numbers are awesome and what that means to our city and the impact that it will make for small businesses and entrepreneurs is amazing. So just kudos to you and looking forward to seeing even better numbers.
Thanks so much.
I see no other comments. Mary Beth and the entire team at NEXUS, I simply want to say thank you. As you know, we have a community-wide survey every year, and there are four things that have risen to the top as areas for improvement, and those are crime, streets, economic development, and as a council, we took it upon ourselves to add homelessness. So those are the four. So you hit one of those key areas that is a priority for the city of Wichita, and I'm just really grateful that this ecosystem of entrepreneurs and innovators continues to be right here in the city of Wichita, and they have the support of not just NEXUS but groups like Weba, the Greater Wichita Chamber of Commerce, as well as Go Create Campaign, and I know that Empowers here as well. This ecosystem requires a lot of moving pieces, but a lot of collaboration. And so I'm really grateful that you are a collaborator and continue to help us with key number three, which is economic development. Thank you.
We're on it.
Miss Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Public agenda. The public agenda allows for up to five speakers to have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to the items on the public agenda other than referral to the city manager for information as necessary. The speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speaker's remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed. The first speaker is Andrew Crane, New Technology.
Well, good evening again, Mayor and Council. I want to introduce Mary from Novulens, and she is going to tell you a little bit more about the new technology.
Ms. Mayor and members of the Wichita City Council, thank you for giving us the time and opportunity to talk about something amazing. But let me first start with a little story. In 1928, a young man named Otto walked into a bakery in Chillicothe, Missouri. He explained that he had something that might interest them. He wanted to show them something he invented. It was a machine you could place a loaf of bread in. It would cut the loaf into equal slices. Amazing. Two years later, virtually every bakery in the world was using an automatic bread slicer. And we remember even today when we say something is as easy as sliced bread, or something is as good as sliced bread. To the people of Wichita, Kansas, this is our Slice Bread Moment. Something has been introduced in the United States, and in a few years, it will be as common as sliced bread. My name is Mary Weber, and I am the President and CEO of Mary's Brawl International, and we are an official partner with Novulens. And to be honest, we are one of the first partners in the United States, and we are the only one west of the Mississippi. So what is Novulens? We like to say they are QR code on steroids. They act as signage. They help with guidance. They help with orientation. They get people where they want or need to go. They offer accessible information in multiple formats and in multiple languages. Novulens codes were created for blind and low-vision people. However, they can be used for everyone. Working with Guiding Paws, the National Federation of the Blind, and countless other groups and organizations, we have a goal of making cities totally accessible for everyone. Wichita has the opportunity to be the sample for the rest of the United States, to be the first truly accessible city for the blind, low-vision, sighted, seniors, visitors from other countries, and everyone else. In closing, we hope that this is the beginning of something Wichita can get behind and work with throughout every department and throughout the entire city. This can be Wichita's new sliced bread moment. Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Any questions from the council?
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Not really a question, but just I plan on seeing you later this week at your event? Is that Thursday?
Yes, Thursday.
So I'm looking forward to seeing this technology and how it works and how we can implement it to make Wichita more accessible for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mary, and thank you, Andrew. I don't know if anyone from Communications is around, but I do want to give a plug to the wichita.gov website, which has accessibility tools for those who are low and visually impaired. I know that that was one of the efforts that the Communications Department tried to focus on last year when the website was relaunched. And so it does have greater capabilities for those who have low vision or are blind. And so I wanted to give that shout out to the wichita.gov team, which is the communications Ms. Clerk, can you please call the next individual? Is Pam Gillespie here? I see she is not. Ms. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Good evening and thank you for having us this evening. My name is Jamie Scott, and I'm the Director of Social Services for Salvation Army, South Central Area Command, located right here in the heart of downtown Wichita, 350 North
Good evening. I'm Dulce Palma, and I'm the Associate Director of Emergency Social Services for South Central Area Command.
We'd like to talk to you tonight about some of the things that we are doing in our community, some of the things that are near and dear to our heart. We've heard people talk about their passion, and this is our passion. We are standing in the gap with some of the most vulnerable individuals we have in our community. We are serving the homeless, the working poor, and those with addiction issues. We are looking to do things that are different than what we have done before. It's not going to work to just say to someone, here's a handout, here's this. We have to provide things that are going to move people forward. And so we are participating in a transitional housing and rapid rehousing program. We've been doing this since 2017, but this allows us to work with homeless individuals, single women and families who do not have anywhere else to go. We have six apartments on grounds that people can stay in with their families while they are getting an education, while they are paying off back debt, while they are working on their housing issues, so they don't have to worry about that when they move in then to our rapid rehousing program. Not only that, but we have opened up a recovery home within the last year. Not everyone is ready to move directly into housing. Some people need an extra hand. And so we help with things like drug and alcohol counseling, we provide recovery plans, we provide life skills, and we are seeing some amazing things happen. We have individuals who have turned their lives around in six months and are now enrolled in college.
They say a community is only as strong as its most vulnerable member, and at the Salvation Army, we take some of those vulnerable members of our community and we empower them. With our emergency social services, we provide an immediate need such as an ID or utility assistance service, but more than that, we empower them more long-term to make a life-changing impact. With that ID, we've now equipped them to go and look for employment or housing. With that utility assistance, we're offering classes, which are new to the Salvation Army, but we're very excited about. We have a whole booklet of material and resources that we give to them. We connect them with agencies that can help them more long-term with their budget and finances so that they're not coming back and returning to us in another six months for other services. In addition to that, we have a pantry, and we've started an urban farm right at 350 North Market, so we're very excited to be able to share the produce of that. And not only that, but we're looking forward to having a social enterprise with that where we're dehydrating and selling, and some of the clients with the recovery home and other participants can be involved in learning about that, learning about employment and other things along the way. We also have a long-term program called Pathway of Hope, which is for families that have children in the home. And with that, we provide access to classes so they can learn again about budgeting, cooking, car maintenance, things that can make a difference in their home. And then they work with case managers more long-term so that they are breaking the cycle of generational poverty as they're learning to move towards goals to make life-changing
I just want to say we appreciate all of your support. Over the last few years, all of you have shown up to our events, you have shown up to our grand openings, you have visited our programs, and you have shown our support. We appreciate that you are taking into account that there are vulnerable people in our community and that they are important.
Thank you very much, and also thank you to Nancy, who gave us some handouts. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. The appreciation and the gratitude is on this side of the bench because you guys are the ones out there doing the work, and you're doing a great job. And a lot of us have family and friends who are out there, and so just seeing an organization like yours who's really working and succeeding in a lot of ways, it really buoys our hope in our hearts as well. So thank you all for everything you do, and you're truly doing the Lord's work.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Salvation Army has a special place in my heart because you had biddy basketball years ago, and I was one of the very first years when it was only in one gym downtown. And then I coached my kids in biddy basketball a long time. But I guess my point of that is you have evolved and constantly changing to meet the needs. You no longer do that, YMCA does that, other organizations, but you constantly change and evolve to meet the community's needs, and I very much appreciate that and admire that. Thank you.
Thank you for your words of support.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. I had the opportunity to visit you all a couple of weeks ago and really go in depth about these services, and I'm really grateful that you have the new recovery home. I went to the grand opening last year. Can you tell us, is there still room for individuals who may need that help?
There is, and they can contact us at 263ARMY, that's 263-2769. It is for single men and single women who do not have insurance, they do not have the ability to get into a traditional treatment setting. ability to get into a traditional treatment setting, they are ready to make a change, they are willing to work a program, and all they have to do is call us and we will sit down and talk to them and see what we can do to start them on that journey.
Thank you for offering that service to especially our single men and women who don't have insurance. This program is approximately six months to a year?
They can actually stay with us for up to a year. Some will not need that long, but they are given the opportunity to really work on their recovery first and then start looking at employment or school and moving through their plan at that point, so that when they do reach the point of permanent housing, and that is the goal with their sobriety, is that they will become productive citizens, they will have enabled themselves to do much better than what they were doing than when they first came to us.
Thank you for that. And then the next question I just had was about the Emergency Social Services. You provide IDs at Salvation Army. Can you talk about some of the barriers that people are facing regarding IDs? This is going to be a topic we will be discussing from the bench in just a couple of minutes. Can you just share, what are some barriers people face in getting IDs?
Oftentimes, it's some of their own barriers that they're struggling with that have, maybe their ID has expired or they've lost it. When Jamie talked about some of the people that are in the addiction cycle, some of the people who are in the homelessness cycle, some of the people that have mental health or just lower-income families. Believe it or not, we see a lot of individuals, it's $22 to renew your ID, but when you don't have employment and you need that ID to get employment, that's a little bit of a loop for them. So we are lucky enough to partner with the Mobile DMV Department. They come to the Salvation Army once a month, and with that, we provide approximately 17 to 25 IDs that people are walking out the door with their temporary ID in their hand, waiting for that permanent ID to come. And for some of them, it's been maybe only a couple of months, but for some of them, it's been a couple of years, and they're very excited to get that new ID so they can take that next step toward housing or employment.
Thank you for that insight. I really appreciate it. So again, thank you very much Salvation Army. Nancy, thank you very much for sharing the services that you guys provide, and I know that our community is very grateful that you do help a lot of individuals here in the city of Wichita. So thank you to your entire team.
Thank you.
Ms. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Amaya Williams, Mayor's Youth Council. Good evening, everyone. My name is Amaya Williams, and I'm the senior at the best high school in Wichita, Wichita East High. And I've been elected by the Mayor's Youth Council to be the youth mayor of Wichita this year, and I just wanted to give a shout out and show all the amazing work we've been doing in the community, especially during the time where there's a conception that youth are not in touch with their community and they don't care about what's going on. But we have a group of students that really, truly care about Wichita and want to see some change. So I wanted to give my little state of the council address. So just a little bit about what NYC is. The Mayor's Youth Council was formed in 2008 by Mayor Carl Brewer, and it provides youth with the opportunity to weigh in on community issues and learn about their city government. So we forge partnerships in the community, engage youth in projects throughout the cities, advocate for youth in our community, be a positive role model for youth through activities such as educational support and leadership, and be as civically engaged and knowledgeable about the city and just how the city functions in general, because sometimes that's a confusing topic, especially to people our age. So earlier this year in September, at East High's Big Do, which is just kind of a fundraising event for their clubs, we decided to have a table with pamphlets with all the voting information you need, because a lot of high schools are turning 18, and this is an election year, so we wanted to make sure that we could get youth with the information we need. So we had QR codes that led to their polling place, links that showed what voting day actually looks like, because we found that that's what turns a lot of new voters away from voting, is being unsure about what the process of voting looks like. We had government websites to show who is on your ballot, so that way you're able to research the people that are on your ballot so you can make an informed choice. We also had links that had the types of IDs to bring to your polling place and also the rights you have as a voter, so that way new voters feel confident about their vote and being civically engaged. We also had information about NYC and upcoming city events. And just this past week, we took four members, including myself, to Washington DC for the National League of Cities, or the Congregational National League of Cities, and we were able to learn from other youth councils and sharpen our leadership skills and see what, you know, youth in California or Texas or Oregon and see what they're doing and really just learn and grow from each other, and it was an awesome time. So our vice youth mayor, Erin Liu, who's in that top right corner, she's unable to be here today because she's visiting some colleges. She created this council-wide project, which is a video series on Facebook and Instagram that is called Wichita Gems Uncover, where we interview local businesses to encourage people to explore locally, and we want to strengthen our community relationships. So each member on the Mayor's Youth Council in about groups of four to five, we went to businesses and we interviewed them and we tried their food and really just had those sit-down conversations. And I would encourage all of you guys to follow us on Instagram at ICTNYC, and it's the same for Facebook, and just watch those reels and learn a little bit more about the business leaders in your community. So we have these things called issue groups, where in the beginning of our session, we vote on the issues that are most important to youth. And so this year, we found four issues that youth really want to focus on, and one of them was sustainability. And so our sustainability issue group created the Spring Renaissance Fashion Show to promote sustainability via clothing and awareness about fast fashion. And if you can see those gorgeous pictures up there, these are all youth-led, the models, the venue, or the venue was at Mark Arts, but obtaining the venue and planning and organizing completely youth-led. And we also had a small quartet from East High that came and played, and it was absolutely beautiful. And all these pictures that were taken, they were done by youth photographers, so it's all youth-involved and all youth-focused, because you have youth out here in your community that are doing amazing things. The sustainability issue group also worked with the city's Sustainability Integration Board to learn more about community efforts. They intend to have a booth day at the, or a booth at the upcoming Earth Day event, and they're hoping to work with Public Works and Utilities and Water Works to learn more about the drought and how youth can help and stay involved. Our diversity and inclusion issue group is continuing our annual cultural kickback, which is really just a time of celebration and celebrating the diversity that we have here in Wichita. We're the most diverse city in Kansas, and we should be proud about that. So we want to engage with our local businesses, our local leaders, and just have fun with music, food, and vendors. And they're also purchased a children's book to learn more about different cultures, and we'll be doing activities with elementary-age kids. Our homelessness issue group is creating 100 wellness baskets filled with necessities like toiletries, water, oral care, Band-Aids, socks, all bought from Amazon, and they also received a sponsorship from Shields to purchase even more items. And they're planning to try and get in touch with the multi-agency center to donate, once they're complete with their grand opening, and really just see what resources we have on the community and how we can directly give to the resources that are helping our most vulnerable people. Our violence prevention issue group, in conjunction with NYC's Executive Board, Councilmember Hoheisel and Councilmember Johnson, and other community groups, we are trying to have a fully youth-organized and youth-led and youth-involved unity in the community event, so that way we can have the best turnout of youth my age, because it's people my age in high school that are doing these acts of violence and these people that are going astray and they're hurting and they're struggling. And so we want to reach out to our youth, and by reaching out to our youth, we have to give them a seat at the table. So that's our focus with our next unity in the community event. And if you want to contact us, please email us at wichitaNYC@gmail.com. Please, please, please follow our Facebook and our Instagram, and that's how you'll really get to see our day-to-day and what we're working on. You'll get to see more of our members, you'll get to see our reels and just the good things that we're doing in the community. If you'd like to come to one of our meetings and really see what's going on, please email us and just stay in touch and know that youth in the community really do care about the community and they want to see Wichita become a better place, so please stay engaged with us. And if you're listening and you have youth that want to get involved, we have applications opening up here about April/May. So thank you, and if council has any questions, I'm here.
Thank you very much, youth mayor Amaya Williams. Thank you again also for doing the introduction at the state of the city. I'm really appreciative of you and the entire Mayor's Youth Council present here today. Give them a round of applause.
Yes, thank you. That's all of them in that row. And this is only half of our group. Yes, no, these kids definitely deserve to be celebrated. This is only half of our council. It is spring break for us, and a lot of people are out of town. But yeah, this is an amazing group, represented in all districts and most of all of our Wichita schools, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for being here. Thank you to the council. I've met a lot of you before, but as the first person on this council to ever serve in the Mayor's Youth Council, I want to give advice and say, be bold, know that every room you show up in, you belong in, and don't be afraid to hide your voice. And 90% of the job is just to show up, work harder than anybody, and I hope that some of you continue at this bench in the future as well. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you for having us. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, questionable East High, you know?
No, that's not questionable. That's a fact, actually.
But what is the best district in Wichita, then?
District three. District three, District one, District one-two. Okay, I have to give it, I have to give it to both of you guys.
Yeah, now that we got the divisive stuff out.
I know. They're putting me in a tough position, everybody.
That's the pains of leadership.
I know. Politics, am I right?
Yeah. I can't wait to see what happens with the Unity in the Community March or event that we're planning. You're absolutely right, you guys are the ones that will be best able to diagnose and reach out to your peers who are having issues inside the school and at home. So we have Jose, Jose right over here. He was maybe the most pivotal, important member of putting this together last year, so definitely reach out to that man right there.
Yes, of course. Can't wait to work together.
Very special, and I can't wait to see what we do with that this year.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Glasscock took all of my remarks earlier, and that's what he was reading from, but, and also Northeast is the best school, and yes.
You guys don't have sports, though.
We're undefeated in all sports. But I just wanted to say, great job to you, great job to the Mayor's Youth Council, and like Councilmember Glasscock said, every room you're in, you definitely belong. Always use your voice, stand up for what you feel is right. All of us would want somebody standing up for us in this situation, so always stand up for right. And it can be hard, it can be lonely, it can be tough, but if you don't do it, who will? And each of you have the ability to do so. You are leaders now, and continue to fight for a better world. This world changes on the backs of young people. It always has and it always will. My daughter reminds me how old I am now, and my gray hairs, so all of you young folks have the ability to make those changes in the committees that you all are on. Keep that, keep that fight up, and it doesn't matter if us adults sometimes tell you no, you keep fighting anyway. That's how change happens. So I'm proud of all of you. Keep up the good work, and also remember Northeast is the best high school.
And one more time, I just wanted to thank you for reminding us that the Mayor's Youth Council was started by the late Mayor Carl Brewer, and I think he would be very proud to see that a youth council member is now a council member for the city of Wichita, and I think that that just shows to our youth council that this is a job for you too. It's about being a public servant in our community, and I'm just really grateful that you continue to advocate for the issues that youth care about. You talked about sustainability and helping with the drought. We do need messaging about helping with this drought that we're facing, diversity and inclusion, really celebrating the cultures in our community, homelessness, and thank you for creating those wellness baskets that will be shared at Ninth and Main, which is the new multi-agency center. And I appreciate that you're focusing your energy towards the multi-agency center. And last but not least, violence prevention with unity in the community, something that was started by Councilmember Johnson, Hoheisel, and the Greater Wichita Ministerial League. And I'm very grateful that it will now be youth-led, because that is the purpose. We want to make sure that youth know that there are resources in our community, that violence is not what we need to resort to, but rather resort to connecting to resources and helping to be better neighbors. So thank you very much for your leadership, youth mayor Williams.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Clerk, I believe we have two spots left for anyone in the audience who would like to address the council.
Hello, council. This is my second time I've ever been here, and the first time I was the very last speaker. My name is Sarah Cowleen. I'm also, I emailed you guys earlier today, it came under, I think under Supportive Families for, it came up as Sarah Price. I am the Outreach Coordinator for Grassroots Bridge Builders, which was formed here in East Chambers. I came to speak on a little bit of, like, as far as the identification, the municipal ID. I know that's one thing that you guys and we have, I have been kind of asking for, I have been homeless predominantly for the last four years, and I have had the Salvation Army, they have helped me with my identification twice. And I sent over an email, kind of on some of the limitations that I saw that you guys had as far as some of the guidelines for the municipal ID, and one of them still included having a proof of address. And I understand that being, you know, to show that we are actual residents of Wichita, it does kind of need a proof of address, but as an outreach coordinator, I have worked out and talked to more homeless people than I wish there were. And like, one issue that we have over and over and over have had is there's no proof of identification or proof of address. Unless, they say, pardon me, I'm not very good at speaking, the face sheet. Sometimes the face sheet, if you have a face sheet, if you've been to jail, you can get a face sheet, and that is proof of address. I have a 28-year-old son who has never been to jail. We had a house fire where we lost everything, and of course, when I went through Red Cross, one of the problems that we faced was because our name was not on the bills and we had no proof of address, because paper burns. And so, and our house was undeliverable. We have been out here for three years, and I've gone to work release for child support, and I've obtained two IDs. But being out here also, sometimes we're a very vulnerable population, and if you put something down, sometimes it does not happen to be there when you turn around. I was attacked by a dog in July, and my purse and my identification have been gone. And thank God, before this meeting, I was able to gather some notes, just, I had some ideas on things, not enough time to actually tell you, but I did send something over through your email on some possible ideas that might help just, you know, like, because that is the biggest problem we have out here. You know, most people think that, like, we have the drugs and we have the homelessness and being moved around, but it doesn't do anything if we can't show who we are. We can't get a job, we can't get a place to live, we cannot even vote to try and change things because we don't have that identification. And we have the open door, which they offer some relief on the, as far as they have a reporting, a day reporting, where you can go in and you take a TB test, and as long as you're accountable and can show up for those three days before you can get verified to go in there, then you can have that address. But a lot of these people, they're not just downtown. I mean, they are everywhere in this town, from 47th and McArthur and Hydralic, where a lot of us has been moved to, to out west past 118th. I mean, they're everywhere. And getting somewhere where, I go back a lot, back and forth, and I do want to mention one thing that during, that you had mentioned, was during, with the homeless encampment, as far as why people don't go to shelters. And you had asked, why people don't go to shelters when it's the coldest winter, and we discussed how leaving people's stuff behind... And we discussed how leaving people's stuff behind and having the things that they have left, they're afraid to leave their stuff because they might come back and everything they have left is gone. So just getting to a place where they trust going to those centers, you know? I don't know how to conclude this because like I said, this is my second time. I'm hoping one day to be better at speaking so I can be more efficient in carrying the message. But I do thank you guys for this time. I have almost out of time. So with that, I will stop.
Thank you very much, Sarah. I have some council members that have questions, but I'm going to ask one really quickly. I did not receive your email. So I don't believe, could you, if any council members received that email, can you forward it to?
It's in your spam email. If you check your junk email, I just did, and so I can take myself off the board. But I looked up Sarah Price in my junk email and it's there. So I, we didn't get it probably until just now if we check our junk email. So thank you for being here today.
And I do want to say Northeast yay.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Oh, thank you. I was going to say that as well. You can also in the future, and this is for anybody, if you want to get ahold of all of us simultaneously, you can email dlcitycouncilmembers@wichita.gov. That comes to all of us and so you don't have to figure out how to spell all of our names correctly. And then I want to say you're a great speaker as well. And thank you, I'll give you the same advice I gave the NYCU. You belong here, you belong in the room and I think you were a phenomenal speaker. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We have room for one more speaker.
Hello, Faith Martin. I've been here lots of times, so I appreciate you letting me speak when there's only one spot left. It's no secret that I've told people that I'm a libertarian. I'm so happy that we have a libertarian mayor. Unfortunately, there are some who will always find true liberty to be too risky of an idea to embrace. And unfortunately, many of those are our elected officials. I'm wearing this button today because I support transgender community. And I'm really disappointed in the fact that the three of you thought that you don't represent that community when that community lives in Wichita. So I would just like to say, please live up to your libertarian values. We're behind you and we support you. And remember that all of us here live together and individuals are the lowest form of government. And what I do with my body, what my friends do with their body, what the community chooses to do, those choices they make are none of my business and none of your business. But I still support the community to be able to be who they are, what they are, live where they live and be successful and flourish in Wichita. So I hope, I hope that you'll change your mind. I hope that you will embrace the community and remember that they're Wichitaans too.
Thank you, Faith. Ms. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Consent agenda items one through 14.
Are there items to be polled? Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to poll item 2, 3D.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull item 11.
Any other items to be polled? I see none. I move to approve the consent agenda items without 3D and number 11.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. We'll begin with 3D.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a quick question regarding, or for Public Works regarding this agreement. In the background, it had said the agreement expired in December of 2024. It's now March of 2025. So questions, what do we do in the lapse of the agreement? Was it the previous operating agreement based on wholesale? Because it looks like wholesale prices. And what do we have as a stopgap so when agreements do expire, we proactively are renewing them?
So I think, Mayor and Councilmember Gary Janson, Public Works and Utilities, I think with this particular agreement, we're trying to, over the course of time, these agreements are in place for a long time. And so as they come up, we're trying to standardize language. Most of these agreements will continue. There's language in them that says they continue, right? But we have close communication with them and this one in particular, they had some, some issues they were trying to resolve on their end and it just took them a little bit longer, but we were in contact with them that entire time. We've got another one, it's kind of happened at the same time with one of our other wholesale customers. But there's, we work with our attorneys, there's language in there that allows the, the agreement that's in place to extend beyond that in the absence of an update. So I think we've got ourselves covered pretty well.
Any further questions for staff? I see none. We will open it up for public comment regarding wholesale water service agreement with the city of Park City. I see no public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. I will move to approve consent agenda item 3D.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Next item is consent agenda item number 11.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I just had maybe an issue with this. This was opposed by, I believe, three departments within the city of Wichita. And it passed MAPC eight to five to one. Staff recommendation is still to deny. This pertains to a bike trail, a planned bike trail from South Wichita to Hayesville. The mayor of Hayesville also supports this trail as well. I have some concerns about if we do vacate this property, that it will end up going over to Seneca, which Seneca, right along that way, that's a pretty hectic street going from Hayesville to South Wichita. So the recommendations was to deny this, but it's still here on consent for us to pass it. So I do, I have heard quite a bit from members of my community and members of the bicycle community as well. So I, I think Councilmember Glasscock has also been in contact with the agent, working out a compromise where we can still get this bike trail safely through there and, and still meet the, kind of the desires of the applicant as well. So I think I'll turn it to Dalton as soon as we have public comment here or questions in order to make a motion.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I may, on the topic of public comment, because this is a planning item. If you wish to have public comment, you may just make a motion to suspend policy number nine for this item. However, we would, if the applicant's not here to discuss, we would discourage public comment because it could affect due process of the applicant if there's more testimony and evidence taken and applicant's not here to discuss.
What would we do without you, Jennifer?
Just food for thought, so.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine. I'll just let, turn it over to Councilmember Glasscock.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Before I have comments, I would be interested to see if any of my other colleagues have opinions about this.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Councilmember Hoheisel said, I have heard very loud and clear from the bicycle community that they are absolutely against this. I think part of it too is from what they had heard, there was not much negotiating with the applicant. So I'm curious to, I don't know if we need to just do a brief overview so the audience knows what we're talking about. I don't know what that process looks like, but yeah. So I just heard from the cyclist community, I think they're anxious that it just goes away. I know the project's not in the CIP, I believe yet, but there are plans for it in the future. And so just passing some of my constituents' concerns.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I too have heard from a lot of the cycling community. And being a cyclist myself, I appreciate the bike paths. However, I do like economic development, so I'd like to see it go through. I'm interested to hear what the compromise is because maybe that bike path can just go around the property instead of going all the way to Seneca. So I'm interested to hear what that might, might look like.
I see no further comments. I also have received just emails regarding the bicycle master plan. And I think they emailed all of us on the council. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll share some comments because I was conflicted about this. I had no intention of pulling it off consent, but it appears the will of the body is to have some compromise solution. And so rather to deny the application, I would be interested in seeing if there's a way that we can move forward where we balance economic development with quality of life. I think this project's incredibly important for the public. It's a parcel of land, it's two parcels of land. There's an application for vacation in the middle of the property that is currently projected on the bicycle master plan later on. It's not projected in the CIP. And so there's two other areas to go around to connect to the larger master plan. So that's the context of this. I really do think this is an interesting balance of the quality of life and economic development. It is, like I said, in the bicycle master plan, I voted against that because I had deep concerns with that plan, but it isn't in the CIP. So I think this makes it very interesting as well regarding the application. So I've spoken with the applicant, I've had communication with them. I've communicated with cyclists that have reached out as well. I will say for the record, I have not had one constituent around the property reach out with concerns about this vacation. It's from cyclists that live outside of District Four, with the exception of one cyclist who does live within the district. And so in speaking with the applicant, I think there's a way we can move forward that balances their ability to move forward with the project and also for quality of life as well. And so before I make the motion, this would require a dedicated 30-foot easement by separate instrument on some other aspect of the property line. So they would still be able to move with the vacation, but they would have to provide an easement at the end of the property line. The justification for this as well, the parcels between that we're looking at a vacation are approximately six acres, about 60 feet across. A vacation is, or the easement request is about 30 feet across. So they're still gaining property. The city is still relinquishing our property to them in an additional 30 feet. So they're not losing anything that they're requesting. It's actually they're gaining 30 feet. So with all of that context and seeing nobody else on the board, I move to approve the vacation order as recommended by MAPC, subject to an additional condition. I will describe that in a moment and authorize the necessary signatures. The approval of this vacation shall not become effective until the following additional condition is met. The applicant shall designate, or shall dedicate a 30-foot easement by separate instrument that will allow for the development of a north-south path from 47th Street to the south end of the proposed vacation area. The easement must be approved by the Engineering Division of the Public Works and Utilities Department. Copies will be provided to the Planning Department. So this gives the applicant the ability to figure out a path that works for them and the development of their parcel of land, instead of the city prohibiting the development right down the middle of their property.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Glasscock, just a question. I know I talked to you earlier, but just for the public, I also had heard a lot, this will not push a bike path potentially to Seneca, correct?
The, they would have to provide the dedicated 30 easement through their property. A Seneca parcel would not be on their property.
We have a motion and I will second that. Any further discussion? Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Dalton, can you give us like the Reader's Digest version of what you just said in that motion? Because that was a lot to understand.
Sorry, I was trying to do legalese to make sure it was all good to go.
We got that part covered.
Simply, it would, the parcel that's currently that they're applying to vacate is the only, is the previous Union Pacific Railroad, which divides both of their properties. And so what this would do is it would require this going over near 47th Street as more of a seven near their property or more of an L near 47th Street. So it goes around their property instead of through the property. So right now, if we were, the MAPC recommendation is to go through their property. Or yeah, to go through their property, the comments that we've received don't desire them, they want a complete denial of the application so they couldn't have any vacation. This would give them the middle of the property if they would add an easement on one corner of their property.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question for our esteemed legal department here. This locks up into that, so in that way, the vacation would not process until we come to an agreement.
That is correct, the, correct, Councilmember. It's a conditional motion.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes seven zero. Ms. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Board of Bids and Contracts dated March 17, 2025.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. Board of Bids and Contracts convened March 17, 2025 for the following items. For engineering, we have the water distribution system tied with sanitary sewer improvements to serve Bridger at Central Edition for Mace Construction Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of $4,431,967.30, subject to your approval of a new engineer's estimate and budget authorization April 1st. We have the water distribution system to serve Brookfield South Edition Phase Six, tied with water distribution to serve Brookfield South Edition Phase Seven, tied with stormwater system number 775 and sanitary sewer improvements to serve Brookfield South Edition Phase Six and Seven. Your staff didn't think I would get that. Macola Escavation Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of $532,716. This will be subject to your approval of a new engineer's estimate and budget authorization March 25th. We have the Cheney Pump Station Variable Frequency Drive Upgrade for Atlas Electric LLC in the amount of $1,557,355. We have the Murdoch Park, Kiwanis Park and Cessna Park Basketball Courts for Rosten Construction LLC in the amount of $204,282.50 negotiated the engineer's estimate. We have the 2025 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, CIP Ultra Thin Bonded Overlay Phase One for Conspec Incorporated DBA Kansas Paving for $1,728,587.75 negotiated to the engineer's estimate. We have the 2025 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, CIP Ultra Thin Bonded Overlay Phase Two for PPJ Construction Incorporated, negotiated the engineer's estimate of $1,570,000. We have the 2025 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program Preservative Seal for ProSeal Incorporated in the amount of $924,564.98. We have the stormwater sewer number 807 improvements at Wassel and Hydralic for Barclay Construction LLC in the amount of $222,897. We have the K-42 improvements at I-235 interchange to serve Keller Edition for Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $1,909,303.50. We have the sanitary sewer improvements to serve the King's Coast Edition for Macola Escavation Incorporated in the amount of $199,390. For purchasing, we have the Liquid Oxygen Contract Change Order for Lampton Welding Supply. We're requesting authorization for an amended amount of $498,834 per year. For fire escape kit and system Sterling Custom FCX Escape System Contract Change Order recommending all hands fire equipment LLC, requesting your authorization for an amended estimated annual usage of $50,476.25. We have the upgrade to manage relay interactive voice response, or IVR, for Selectron Technologies Incorporated for a five-year aggregate total of $240,514.49. And for airport, we have the airfield pavement rehabilitation and lighting improvements. We're rejecting all bids, trying to go back out for this in the future. This is how to become a vendor with the city. This is our purchasing calendar of small business resource partner events the city is hosting or participating in. And these are open public opportunities out on the street today. And I'd be happy to try to answer your questions and I recommend your approval.
Thank you, Josh. Questions for staff? I only have one, but it's in regards to two slides, number two. I only have one, but it's in regards to two slides, number 25 and 26. Both of these had an original bid that was lower than the engineer's estimate. Can you explain both of those?
Yeah, this is, thank you for the question, Mayor. This is a unique project ask of the Purchasing Division and something you won't frequently see. I'll let engineering speak to it, but I want to highlight in the specifications of the bid document, part of the reason that we're comfortable with this and we recommend your approval of this item is when we work with the Law Department on the bid specifications, we add a section called Project Awarding, and I'll read. The projects for Phase One and Phase Two, the Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, CIP Ultra Thin Bonded Overlay, are both scheduled to bid February 28, 2025. Both projects have the same contract completion date and are critical to be completed by this date. Due to the critical nature of the schedule, the city will award Phase One and Phase Two to two separate, different firms due to the required contract schedule. And I'll go ahead and let engineering speak to that.
Good, good evening. Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities. And Mayor, let me go back maybe to your first question regarding the bids were lower than the engineer's estimate. We are awarding the contract to the engineer's estimate. These projects are bid with measured quantities, so that gives us a little bit more room to, if we go over in quantities, that we can go up to that amount. But we will only pay for what the quantities that we use. So increasing through the engineer's estimate gives us a little bit more flexibility for additional work to be completed.
Again, it's only for what you use, not, so it allows you the flexibility, but it's not like we're going to pay the 1.7. If it's lower, we can still stay at the original bid of 1.7.
That is exactly right, yes.
Right. Thank you very much, Paul. Appreciate it. Any further questions for Josh? I see none. I move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts dated March 17, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Ms. Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements?
Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Utilities. I have petitions for your consideration this evening. The signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement district, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Prairie Glen Edition located, this should be in District Two. I apologize for the typo. Projects will provide water, stormwater drain, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements for new residential development. And it is recommended that the City Council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Since we have a lot of new people in the audience, can I just ask a simple question? This is on specials, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you very much. I move to approve the petitions for public improvements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Ms. Clerk, please call the next item.
Ordinance creating Chapter 11.51 of the Code of the City of Wichita relating to the operation of golf carts.
Good evening. Sharon Dickraff, City Law Department, here today to present ordinances regarding the operation of golf carts. As a little background, state law prohibits the operation of golf carts on roads that are 30 miles per hour or higher between sunrise and sunset unless they have the slow-moving emblem and motorcycle lights and on city streets unless they're authorized by city ordinances. City has not passed ordinances regarding golf cart operations, so currently golf carts are illegal within the City of Wichita. Some history, I've been here before. On January 14, a proposed ordinance was passed by the City Council. On January 21, the ordinance was pulled from the consent agenda and sent back out to the advisory boards. On February 25, the council held a workshop to discuss the proposed ordinances and suggested changes. Comments from the DABS varied greatly. Most were supportive of an ordinance, but wanted the restrictions lessened. Wanted the age to operate to be reduced to 16, be allowed to operate at night. Felt that the proposed registration fee was too high and felt that they should be allowed in the downtown area. There were also some concerns that the seatbelt requirements were too burdensome, and other DABS felt that the ordinance was not necessary. Staff direction following the workshop was that the age was to be reduced to 16. Golf carts were to be allowed to operate at night with the proper equipment, motorcycle lights, and the slow-moving emblem. No registration fee or registration. Golf carts can cross streets with speed limits over 30 miles per hour. Golf carts were to be allowed in the downtown court only on sidewalks. Seatbelt requirement was removed, and all penalties were be reduced to no more than $200. The proposed ordinance looks a little different from the recommendations from the workshop. In the interim, there was an Attorney General opinion regarding operation of motor, or motorcycles, operation of golf carts on sidewalks. The proposed ordinance allows the operation on streets with a 30 mile per hour or less. Prohibits golf carts on public highways. Golf carts are not allowed to cross these major highways. Golf carts may cross streets with posted speeds in excess of 30 miles per hour, but only at controlled intersections. Golf carts are allowed in the downtown area without any additional restrictions, and no registration or registration fee is required. Golf carts are not allowed on sidewalks, walking trails, or bike paths. They may be operated after dusk with the appropriate equipment. The ordinances prohibits the operation of golf carts by anyone who is not a licensed driver and over 16 or over, and requires that the golf carts comply with other traffic laws, including maintaining liability insurance. The penalties have been reduced to a fine not exceeding $200, with the exception of no insurance and driver's license requirements. By state law, those provisions or the sentencing's, the sentence is established, and we can't be less than those. And I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sharon. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sharon. Appreciate your work on this. Couple of quick questions. First, does this count as the second reading of the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, so we have to make sure we have it solved today. Okay.
Yes.
The downtown court, sidewalks are removed from downtown court as well?
Yes.
Okay. What is the cost of a permit to the city if we have, like, what does it cost us to have employees process that?
Licensing staff estimated that it would be approximately $35 for the initial decal and processing of a registration. Currently, there is no registration requirement in the ordinance.
No registration requirement in ordinance?
No, and no fee required in the ordinance.
Okay. And like cities, comparable cities, are there anything like age limits with who can ride in these golf carts?
I couldn't see anything regarding age limits regarding to ride necessarily. I was aware of your concerns, and we did add some provisions on Page Six of the ordinance regarding the number of occupants that you can't ride unless they're attended, and you can't have folks riding on laps.
Right, yeah, I appreciate that.
So, so those were additional provisions that were not in any of the earlier drafts.
Okay, so there's nothing that we saw that prohibits influence anybody under the age of two or five or anything from riding?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your work on this. Just for clarification for the public too, because this is weird where the city actually has to pass an ordinance to make it less restrictive than state law, correct?
We have to pass an ordinance to make it consistent with state law. State law says that it's illegal unless we do something.
Correct. So by doing something or permitting it, or state law prohibits it if there's no action taken?
Yes.
Thank you.
I see no further questions for Sharon. Again, thank you very much, Sharon. This went back to all the district advisory boards. There are six district advisory boards, and they all either chimed in or gave some feedback to the six council members. So again, thank you for adding the additional public engagement for this. So Sharon, you gave lots of presentations, so thank you very much. We will now open it up for public comment.
Good evening. My name's Steve Lackey. I live at 2414 Spring Meadow. I just wanted to publicly thank the City Council and the staff for taking the time to revise the ordinance and try to reach a compromise with all of us. I'm in full agreement with the ordinance. I'm disappointed that the sidewalks access has been taken out, but that's, that's the way government works. It's a compromise. So thank you for your indulgence over these last two months. And thank you to the Law Department and the Police Department for putting up with us and taking our comments. And thank you to Councilmember Johnston for representing our district. Thank you.
My name's Philip Slate. I just wanted to, again, thank you as well. I'm in favor of golf carts being allowed in Delano. I'm the president, and I'm an attorney at Slate and Howard. And when we moved to Delano in 2021, it opened up a world of events and vitality and energy that we hadn't experienced as a law firm before. Since that time, our business has grown tremendously. We sponsor the St. Patrick's Day Parade. We also sponsor the Amber Waves Event. And in June, for the third year in a row, we'll sponsor the, or we'll have at our office the Kansas Trial Lawyers Association, which is a group of about 400 attorneys practicing in the state of Kansas. When they come into town, they want to utilize Delano. And some of them are older, having golf carts that they can use or that we can take them to different businesses or restaurants will be tremendously helpful. So again, thank you for your work. I don't have much else to say. I think golf carts would help our business, and so I thank you for your support.
Thank you for the two public comments. Do we have one more? Thanks.
Stephanie Pittman, 2828 North Wild Rose Court, West Side, Wichita. I have attended almost all of your DABS. First, let me say I'm very, very impressed with the way that you engage with your citizens, with your constituents, with how you are, you take such care of, of the people in your districts. And the ones that we were unable to visit, it's typically because they were set on top of each other at the same date. And otherwise, we would have came definitely, or I would have came and visited, and I, and I still may. I sat through the youth council at Mike's DAB, and it just was really great for that engagement. I also want to make sure that, you know, this came about from what we felt was a lack of transparency. I feel like there have been a lot of changes to that transparency. There definitely was a willingness to hear us, and I want to appreciate that and let you know how much we appreciate it. I still would like to address in the ordinance, and I understand that it arose from the Attorney General opinion, which is just an opinion, about driving on sidewalks or other paths. I think that there is a way that you can make it more accessible to some of those outside neighborhoods and still retain small sidewalks and keep golf carts off sidewalks. So make it, in the ordinance, that if a, if a path is over 12 feet in width, that the golf cart is able to go on that so long as they yield to pedestrians. I think there's a way around this. There's a lot of empty paths. If you go to the west side, south side, this, even with the majority of the population not knowing the golf carts were illegal, if you drive around and see these paths, there's no golf carts on there. So I, I would ask the council to reassess and maybe make a modification or an amendment to the ordinance as it stands. But, you know, at the end of the day, I, I really appreciate, just for my family and my community, the efforts that both staff and the council has taken.
Thank you, Stephanie. I do have a question for staff. In particular, this was a question I had from the very beginning, which was, I know that there are some neighborhoods where you do have to cross a protected roadway. So you do have to press a button in order to cross the street, but you still have to utilize a sidewalk in order to get across, get to those positions. How is that being addressed in this ordinance?
In, in this ordinance, you're not allowed to drive on the sidewalks. So, and there may be some streets that a golf cart is not going to be able to cross because they can't get there by, by staying on the street if it's 40 miles per hour or if you have to go on a sidewalk. And, and part of that is a safety issue for pedestrians. The other part is the Attorney General's opinion. It is correct that the Attorney General's opinion, opinion isn't binding on the city council, but it is generally thought of as being persuasive.
Are there any modifications that can be done to do a compromise, again, back to the yielding to pedestrians? I know multiple streets on the east side of town, as well as far west side of town, that not a lot of people, whether pedestrians or even bicyclists, use. So would there be an opportunity so that those more remote sidewalks that are often not utilized can have a golf cart just to be able to, again, cross the street, be at a sidewalk waiting to cross the street?
You, you could. That would be contrary to the Attorney General's opinion. The Attorney General was asked from Valley Center, could golf carts be allowed on multi-use paths? So, and the Attorney General's, in their opinion, said no because a golf cart is considered to be a vehicle, and vehicles are generally not allowed on sidewalks. You also have the question of the widths of paths and how wide the golf carts are. And I asked Paul Gunsman, just how wide are these paths? Multi-use paths are 10 feet wide. New construction areas are about five feet wide. In older neighborhoods, they're four feet wide. So it's, it, it's hard to legislate this type of activity throughout the entire city because of those variations. And you're right, in some, in some cases, multi-use paths may not be used. In other cases, they may have runners on them every day. So this was a compromise that was reached through out the DABS to try to make it as useful as possible for the people who wanted to use golf carts. And it's not going to be a solution for everybody.
Thank you, Sharon. Any further questions? I see none. We'll continue with public comments.
Good evening. Jennifer Arnold, 4613 North Summeron, Magus District. I attended three DAB meetings and have tried to be in contact with city council members. Thank you for addressing this. We didn't know it was illegal in golf cart communities. And so it was a surprise to us, and we do not want to break the law. You guys have put in a lot of time listening to us. Thank you. We do appreciate that. I would say one of the core themes that kept coming up at every DAB meeting that I attended was to remind you whenever you're riding in a golf cart is that you're trying to go play golf. The way this has landed with taking out access to golf courts, golf courts, golf courses, not being able to get there from outside communities, outside neighborhoods. We can't drive on a street because most of the surrounding areas have speed limits over, over 30. So that just takes out streets, unless it doesn't. But that's the way I'm reading it. Just a mom not understanding all of that. But also, it's, now it's taking out sidewalks, which would be a, a next best option if you don't live in the actual golf course. if you don't live in the actual golf course area. I live in an out west golf course community next to it. This will not allow many of us, probably maybe 100 private carts, to even get to the course because we can't drive on a sidewalk or a street and be conscious of our fellow citizens walking or running or anything, as we've been doing for the last 20 years safely. I would just ask and urge and plead that you allow sidewalk usage. If we have driver's license, which you've asked us to do, we are able to make those decisions on not hitting a pedestrian. We've been given that by the city and the state allowed those driver's licenses. We've answered those questions. We won't hit a pedestrian. We can do that on a golf cart. There's, we can do that on a sidewalk. We can move off to the grass. So I'm just urging you to please, before you make this a law and not allow us to even get to the golf course to play golf on a golf cart, that you would not take that away. It's very imperative. And if not just for me, just the overregulation of that for other people in the future. There are others who are impacted by this. It's going to strain the golf court, golf courses. They won't have enough carts to provide for individuals playing golf because we bring our own carts. So don't want to beat the horse there, but I just, I implore you to reconsider this and to just move this way. So thank you again for all the time that you've put into this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for legal. So they do have designated golf cart crossings. Is that something that we find quite common around? And it's something that a community would be able to petition to get implemented?
I don't know the answer to that. I do know that there is one golf, I've been told through the DAB meetings, that there is one golf cart crossing, it's hard to say, in Auburn Hills that goes across 135th. As far as petitioning, whether you can get a golf cart crossing, and I bet Paul's not here. Can you petition to get a golf cart crossing? Well, ask the city engineer.
The only ones that I am aware of that we have posted are probably within, like Auburn Hills, as you cross from one hole to the next and you cross a residential street. But there are probably others around golf courses, but those are getting from one hole to the next. Those are the only ones I'm aware of that we would have posted.
Do we know if there's a process that people could go through if they desired one? I know we do some crosswalks if a community wants to help provide funding for it. So is there something similar with golf cart crossing?
I don't know that we have anything in place at this time, but, you know, as I said, you know, where they would be probably right, adjacent to the golf course is where we would most likely have them posted. But otherwise, I don't know that we would.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Paul. Mike, thank you. I do want to clarify that on 135th, there is a crossing, but it's a tunnel. It was under the street, so. I think the issue probably is more at Reflection Ridge, at 21st and Ridge Road, Tyler. Get into that intersection to get across. That's probably more the issue.
Vice Mayor, I'm on the board for a quick question.
Yeah.
This will be a question for legal real fast. So we talked about the Attorney General's opinion. Is that his opinion of current state statute? And so he interprets state statute that way? And so that's why it's not binding because it hasn't went through the court system? So would state law have to change, and then that would alter his opinion?
That, yes. I mean, his interpretation is based on existing state statutes that define vehicle and motor vehicle. And there is a state statute that says vehicles are not allowed on sidewalks.
So theoretically, the state legislator could address this issue next year. Thus, the Attorney General offering a different opinion?
Yes. Yes. You could amend the state statute, 81575, that says no person shall drive any vehicle upon a sidewalk or sidewalk area except when there is a duly authorized temporary driveway.
So that could be something that people in favor of sidewalks could lobby the state government to change their standards in state statute? And then the city would be able to address it and not be in conflict with state law?
Yes. One other option would be to not require the crossing of roads 30 miles per hour at a controlled intersection. And then you wouldn't have to go up and down on the sidewalks. PD is here. I'm sure that they're probably not going to be supportive of that because you're going to have people essentially jaywalking with a golf cart. But that would be the other option.
Okay, thank you.
We'll continue with public comment.
Deb Lucia, 7302 West Reflection Court. I live in Reflection Ridge, which is a golf cart community, golf course community. And it's the question that just came up. The, everything that you've put together, and thank you for listening, I think is really good, except for the statement that says golf carts have to cross at a controlled intersection. That's the problem for people that live in Reflection Ridge. That golf course is used by people that live across 29th Street. And the only way you can get to Reflection Ridge, if this ordinance goes in, would be down a sidewalk because it's 40 miles per hour on 29th Street. What people do right now is they cross at an, they don't cross in an intersection. So we would need a special crossing for them to get from at least 29th over. And that's the same thing with some of the other areas. So I think everything in here is really good. The thing that you really have to look at is this controlled crossing area. That's the issue that I think another person stated. That's the issue that doesn't work. And I just want to give you some numbers. In Reflection Ridge, the golf course has 49 golf carts. There's over 200 people with private golf carts, golf carts, they have golf carts. I asked them, I called them and asked them, with the 49, could you meet the demand of the golf course? The answer is no. The way this is written, people are not going to be able to access the golf course unless they drive their golf cart over there on a truck or something, the way this is written. So I think what really needs to be looked at is just this crossing issue, how to get. And the way they do it right now, I've seen it numerous times because I live there. If you're on the north side of 29th Street, there's a neighborhood street that's close to getting across the street, and they just kind of go at a little bit of a diagonal to get across. I mean, that's what they do, and it's very safe. They've been, how many years has that golf course existed over there? Over 30 years, they've been doing it. I don't think there's been any accidents that people know how to do it. So it's just the wording of this. I think if it didn't say controlled intersections and it just said at a safe point to get across or that they crossed in an acceptable way to get across 29th Street, and the other streets are very similar to that. The other thing is I also looked at the sidewalks. 21st Street has a much bigger sidewalk than there is at 29th Street. And so that's the other thing about sidewalks. When we say you can't drive on a sidewalk, well, some of the sidewalks are really wide, and it would be safe to probably have a golf cart, like they're doing right now. So that's where maybe going back to the Attorney General or that particular piece of it is looking at specifically the size of the sidewalks that are available in different areas. They are wider on 21st Street than they are on 29th Street. And that's all I have. Thank you very much. You guys did really good. It's just that controlled intersection part of it. If it just says cross at appropriate or something like that, appropriate cross points would make it so that most people could still get to the golf course. The golf course could still function. Thank you very much.
That's a question for staff. I will ask that question. The word controlled, who asked for specifically the word controlled? And can that be modified? Again, back to the question I had earlier, which is, I know a lot of people want to cross so that they can get to a golf course, but in order to do that, you still have to utilize some sort of crosswalk?
Yes. I think you missed my earlier comment. On page four of the ordinance subsection C, you could remove the "but only at controlled intersections" and perhaps add some language that golf carts shall cross in a safe manner and yield to all vehicular traffic. That was requested both by PD, as well as, I think, councilperson Johnston, who has been actively involved in this, was okay with that provision. And I don't want to speak for you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. We will continue with public comment.
Hello, John Vogelai, 14106 West Cabot. I think I offer kind of a unique perspective. I'm here with my business partner, Phil. Our law office kind of doubles as a bar. We have a tap house that runs out of it on the weekends. And so the use of the golf cart, at least in our downtown core with Delano, is mostly for shuttling either people or supplies. And I think it's a great idea to have that at controlled intersections in the downtown core. I'm also an avid cyclist, and I would highly recommend not putting golf carts on the bike paths. That's a very dangerous thing for both, especially when you get a cyclist that's kind of moving pretty quick. That can be dangerous. But I'm also a West Sider. I live in Auburn Hills. And I tend to agree with everything that was said here today, that we have a very safe, wide sidewalk out there, and there are very specific passing points. And so I would state that out past a certain place, I would tend to agree with the commenters that came up. There's really no reason for a controlled intersection if we're not on the sidewalk anyway. I would highly recommend that. Now, for downtown, I think that's a great idea. That's probably where we're at because a lot of the streets here are under 30 miles an hour. But there is no way to reach the golf courses out west. There is no way to cross safely. And what you're going to be doing is diverting those golf carts onto the street, which I think is a tough idea, especially around 4 o'clock on 135th. So I would tend to agree. And I'm just offering my perspective as someone who kind of has both in mind. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who would like to speak on golf carts? I see none. We'll end public comment and bring the comments back to the bench. Would you like to go first or councilmember Hoheisel?
I'll go first. All right.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
I understand this is a very passionate issue for a lot of people, which I had no idea it was, but I can understand it. I very much appreciate Sharon's help. Spent a lot of time together lately. I'm not dating you or anything, but spent a lot of time together, so thank you. We tried to make this just as simple as possible. It's give and take, and that's what local government is. Police Department really wants, the language in there is controlled intersections. I can understand that. I would like to leave that in there. Other things they wanted, we took out. So it's a little bit, a little bit of both. I will say that for 20-plus years at Reflection Ridge and Auburn Hills and Rolling Hills, you've been getting your golf carts to the golf courses. It's been illegal, and I think you can probably still do that. The police department has a lot better things to do than to chase down a golf cart, get into the golf course. So I think you'd be all right. But this just brings us, we have to do this to get it legal through state law because it is illegal for state law now. So at least this will make operating your golf cart legal. And that's why I am going to make the following motion. I moved. You have a comment? Go ahead.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
All right, thank you. I didn't want to jump in front of you there, Vice Mayor, but I do appreciate it. I just had a couple of comments and then maybe a piece for discussion. One thing that this ordinance has really shown is just how we're all Wichitaans. We all come to the same downtown and whatnot, but different areas of the city are different. It does sound like out east and out west, there's a lot of safe travel spots as far as getting to the golf course. I do know that in my district, what I've heard from people is a lot of the concerns about the sidewalks and about crossing the streets. And I don't believe I have a golf course in my district anymore. So a lot of the concern is about people driving around the neighborhoods and whatnot. I would be interested to, looking in the future, about a process for setting up golf cart crossing. We can still do that passing this ordinance. And maybe just a little further down the road, we can look at crossing options. And I don't know if it's discriminatory or not, but within like a certain distance, maybe a mile within golf courses. I don't necessarily think today is the time to necessarily have that discussion, but we can continue with this discussion. I will say one concern, and I did vote for this ordinance originally, is safety, especially with children. And when I originally brought up wanting seat belts in the golf carts, that was one of the things I was thinking about. And then I hear some people's concerns about having the seat belts in the golf carts, and it has to do with the possibility that a golf cart would flip and trap somebody inside. So that got me thinking. I can survive a golf cart flipping. My two-year-old son, possibly not. And so that's one of the concerns, and I just bring it up for discussion about maybe an age limit. An age limit, five or under, maybe not riding in golf carts. I'm just curious to see what the rest of council, their thoughts are on that one. Just, again, it goes back to safety of children. I appreciate that. We don't have it to where they can't ride on people's laps. So I think that eliminates toddler, you know, small children, maybe two or under, and infants. But still, maybe a five-year-old or so, that is a concern of mine. So I just put it out there for the rest of council. I don't know what, any thoughts are right now.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just want to echo my colleagues. Thank you to staff, to legal, Wichita Public, Wichita Police Department, public works, all those who were involved. Thank you to Vice Mayor Johnston for bringing this to our attention. Thank you to our community members who have come to speak today, those who came to our district advisory boards, those who sent emails, called, text. I always appreciate when the community's engaged. I said from the beginning that this is a concern for me. I think that it's confusing. We even internally, I was having a conversation with a colleague and what's a controlled sidewalk, what's not, where can you cross, where can you not? I just think that it's very muddled, and I think that people will accidentally not follow the ordinance just because they don't know what it is. I have said from the beginning, I'm worried about time taken away from Wichita Police Department when they should be focusing on crime prevention and solving crime. So that's an issue that I will continue to be, you know, that will weigh for me. And then the biggest issue for me is safety. We design our roads for cars and automobiles and potentially bikes and bike lanes, but we do not design our roads and our streets and our sidewalks for golf carts. And maybe that's something we need to consider in the future. But for now, I just cannot be supportive for the fear that someone may get hurt. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited about this ordinance. Thank you to staff. I'll admit, when this came before, I thought we only had four votes to be able to get a compromise solution, and somehow it came off better the second time around. And so I'm glad that we took it back out to DAB to see that people stand for more freedom when it comes to operating modes of transportation. And I'm excited for this to move forward. I'm incredibly supportive. Vice Mayor Johnston specifically talked about state law. I would urge those in the audience today. I don't want this bench to do anything that's contrary to state law or federal law. And I respect the Attorney General's opinion on what the current state law is. And so I would urge you to speak with your state legislators about changing state law. And hopefully, we can bring that back before this bench to have a future conversation. I don't want to set a precedent where we're trying to stand against what the state does because I think it's a dangerous precedent to set from this bench when we're on a compliance. And I understand it's not legally binding, but at least it is his interpretation of the law. So I'm very supportive of today's ordinance. I hope we can make it even less restrictive in the future if the state addresses this as well. And And I'm very excited that people will be able to drive their golf carts in the downtown core, specifically Delano, where I represent. I think Delano's on the move, and I think this only adds to that as well. And Council, Councilman Tuttalos referenced, or Ballard represents Delano as well.
I see no further. Councilmembers who want to speak again, this is an opportunity to legalize golf carts in the city of Wichita. And it was under the leadership of Vice Mayor Johnston, who brought this to our entire council's attention. Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you. Councilman Hoheisel, I agree that young children need to be taken care of. I will say that even in non-golf cart committee, communities, people take their young children to the pool, community pool to go, to go swimming. So if they have to sit on a seat, I think it's a lot safer than sitting on a lap. So that was kind of a compromise on that issue. Appreciate it. This will save police time. It'll legalize golf carts, so police don't have to go out when somebody calls and says somebody's riding on a golf cart. I appreciate our police departments work on this, compromise with the, and Public Works and the whole sidewalk issues and Attorney General. So I want to make the following motion. I move to approve the second reading of the revised ordinance and authorize the clerk to publish the same.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion. Motion passes six to one. Ms. Clerk, please call the next item.
General obligation note sale.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Mark Manning with the Department of Finance. Today, I want to present to you the results of our most recent note sale. Just a reminder, we issue notes usually about every six months, and they're very short-term debt that we're going to use to finance projects that are in the construction phase. And these notes do have a six-month maturity. So you approved on February 18th the sale of these notes. We actually had the sale last Thursday on March 13th. And tonight, we're asking you for your ratification of the results of that sale. And then finally, we will close the sale on April 15th. The notes totaled about $43 million, and as I noted, they will mature in October 2025. We're going to finance 207 separate projects with these, the vast majority of which are special assessment projects. About 2/3 of the 43 million is for special assessment projects. About 15 and 1/2 million is for geo-at-large type projects. So we had a very good sale, very competitive sale. We like lots of bidders. We had six bidders, so that's a sign of a very good sale. We awarded the bid to Truist Securities Incorporated, and the interest rate was 2.87%, which again is a very attractive rate and considerably lower than what we issued that for one year ago. So with that, Mayor, we'd recommend that you ratify the award of the bids by the city manager, adopt the note resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. That's the end of my presentation.
Mark, thank you very much. I really am appreciative of you. I think we said this before, but I know that you're prudent and the fiscal responsibility of the city of Wichita gained the city of Wichita the S&amp;P AAA rating. So again, it is under your leadership, and I'm very grateful to you.
Thank you.
I don't see any questions from the bench, so we will open it up for public comment. I see no public comment, so I'll bring it back to the bench. And I would be happy to move that the council ratify the award of the bid, adopt the note resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Thanks, Mark. Ms. Clerk, please call the next item.
Funding for 2025 sidewalk maintenance program.
Good evening again. Paul Gunselman, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you is 2025 sidewalk maintenance program. Public Works and Utilities Department oversees an annual program for sidewalk repairs as provided by Charter Ordinance Number 88. Staff continually receives requests to repair uneven or broken sidewalk sections that may be considered a trip hazard or safety concern. And now that the weather's warming up, we anticipate getting additional ones as folks get out walking more. The cost of the repairs is a responsibility of the abutting property owner. Sections of sidewalk with multiple cracks or cracks wide enough to grow grass shall be replaced. As seen in a couple of these pictures. Sections of sidewalks that are raised or have sunk in one inch or more, creating a trip hazard, shall be leveled or replaced. As well as sidewalk sections with excessive cross slope, more than 1/4 inch and 12-inch length, or sloped away from the street, shall be replaced. As well as sidewalks that may hold water in areas. After getting a complaint, after staff verifies of needed sidewalk repairs, state statute requires that property owners receive a minimum 30 days for the opportunity to have those repairs made by a licensed contractor. An annual on-call contractor is hired by the city for repairs not completed by the property owner, which is often the majority. And there is an economic, economy of scale. For $1 million in annual repairs generally provides the best cost option for the property owners. The intent is to have the city contractor complete repairs as soon as possible after the initial 30 days. So we are in pretty good shape right now. We do, once 30 days is up, we, if the homeowner hasn't repaired that sidewalk, we do get a contractor out there shortly thereafter. The 20, sorry, the adopted 2025 through 2034 capital improvement program includes $1.2 million in 2025 for sidewalk maintenance repairs. Costs will be covered by direct payment from or special assessment over five years to the adjacent property owners. Staff requests authorization of the full 2025 budget to make the repairs. And as a reminder, the intersections are funded by the city if repairs need to be made. In the left side picture there, if you were to extend the property lines out to the curb, that shows the area that the city would be responsible for, including the wheelchair ramp. And there's some pictures of some of those locations that have been repaired. It is recommended that the city council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. Questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. Any individuals who would like to speak on sidewalk maintenance program? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. I would be glad to approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Ms. Clerk, please call the next item.
Main Water Treatment Plant Conversion to Emergency Use District Six.
Good evening. I'm Laura Quick with Public Works and Utilities. This item pertains to the future of the main water treatment plant located in the Riverside area and a recommendation to convert it to be available for emergency use. The new Wichita Water Works plant is nearing completion with performance testing currently underway. The new water plant will replace our 85-year-old plant that we refer to as the Main Water Treatment Plant, or in writing, MWTB. Both plants will operate for some period of time before the Main Water Treatment Plant is taken offline. And we expect the new plant to be our sole source of drinking water by the end of 2025. We now need to determine what we should do with the current water treatment plant, taking into consideration the cost and benefits of some different options. We discussed those options and cost estimates in the city council workshop in October. And I will summarize those that we previously discussed in a few minutes. It's important to note that there's no zero-cost option. We can't simply lock the doors and walk away from the plant, not only because it would pose safety concerns and risk of vandalism, but also because we have critical underground infrastructure on the site that will continue to be used, connecting the new plant to the Hess pump station. And I'll highlight some of that infrastructure on a later slide. So ultimately, what we're here to do today is present you with a recommended option for converting the plant to be available for emergency use. And we're seeking your authorization to initiate that project with a request for proposals. And before we get into the options, I want to recap a few things from the workshop last October. First thing that we looked at when considering what to do with the water plant was our water demand to determine how long we expect the capacity of the new Wichita Water Works to be enough. And so looking at trends for the last 20 years, which you'll see on the left half of this chart, and projecting forward to the next 20 years, which are the smoother lines on the right side of the chart, the black lines on the bottom show the average daily use. The red lines in the middle show the highest use for a single day in each year. We see a steady decrease in demand since 2005, as water conservation and water-saving devices have become more prevalent. This chart looks, shows forward projections that use 2023 as a starting point. And looking out to 2045, we predict that our single highest day of water use will be around 86 million gallons per day, or MGD. And we also made some more conservative calculations based on a 20-year average. And that more conservative projection would indicate that we could see a demand of 96 MGD on the highest day in 2045. Both of those projections are well under the capacity of the new plant, which is shown in blue at the top at 120 MGD. So adding capacity does not appear to be warranted at this time. Another thing that we looked at is the comparison to other large utilities in surrounding states. We wondered how common it is to only have one water treatment plant. This is interesting to us, because even though our new water treatment plant will provide a high degree of redundancy, the plant itself is still a single point of failure in the event of a catastrophe. What we found is that most of our peer utilities have more than one water treatment plant. The notable exception is Kansas City, Missouri, which is the largest utility in the region with a single water treatment plant. However, the Kansas City Water System also has connections to six other regional water suppliers that can be activated in case of an emergency. We don't have that here, because we don't have any neighboring water systems that have enough capacity to supply us in an emergency. And next, we looked at the condition of the main water treatment plant. Most of the infrastructure we have is underground and difficult to show in photos. But here's a few examples of some of our above-ground assets. I won't go through each one of them, but all of them show corrosion. There's some examples of concrete deterioration, things like that. That's not surprising for an 85-year-old plant. The condition of the plant was one of the drivers that led to the decision about 10 years ago to build the new plant. But once it comes offline, the deficits will be easier to address. Takeaways from our condition assessment, the plant is currently functional thanks to our maintenance staff. But many of our assets are at the end of their service life or in need of deferred maintenance. With some rehab work, the plant could still serve a beneficial purpose. Also, disinfection chemical storage facilities do not meet current regulations. We're not currently in violation with that, because they were constructed according to codes at the time. But they wouldn't meet codes for safety today. They're aging, pose a risk to our employees, and we need to rectify that. Lastly, if the main water treatment plant is going to be used in the future, different parts of the plant would need to be rehabilitated and maintained, depending on what water source we use. So now for what we do with the plant, once the Wichita Water Works plant comes online. We've already established the new plant should meet the community's demands for more than 20 years, so we don't need to keep the old plant in operation, at least not continuously. There were three broad categories of options for what we can do with the plant moving forward: demolish it, mothball it, or convert it to emergency use. And before I move on, I want to kind of caption this photo. This is what we call the pipe gallery, and it's one example of the extensive underground substructure at the main water treatment plant. There's much more below ground than what you can see from there outside. So we'll talk first about site demolition. The first option, that would be for the purpose of preparing the site to be used for something else. I'll explain what's on the site first, and then on the next slide, I'll come back to the cost and benefits. So this is a 27-acre site, which is a correction from what I told you at the workshop. I did not realize there's actually two tracks here and added together 27 acres. However, of those 27 acres, about three acres around the perimeter are in easement with pipelines that have to stay in place, even if we demolish the plant, because they're connecting the new plant to the Hess pump station. Also, part of the site are two parking lots, including a 3 and 1/2-acre parking lot for the Wichita Art Museum and 2-acre parking lot for Botanica. So when you account for the pipelines and the parking lots, there are between 8 and 18 and 19 acres remaining that could potentially be available for another purpose. This diagram shows where the pipelines are around the main water treatment plant. Everything in red is critical infrastructure that we cannot demolish. Between the underground infrastructure, like the pipe gallery that you saw, and the complexity of working around the critical pipelines that have to remain in service, the amount of debris to haul away, the cost of filling in the deep basins and basements, the total estimate to demolish the plant and prepare the site for another use is between 50 and $75 million. Coming up with this cost was a joint effort between our engineering consultant and a local demolition contractor, with the highest portion of that cost, about $40 million, being for the fill material, including purchase, hauling, and placement. They noted that filling the hole left from the plant and the basins would require nearly 20,000 truckloads of material to be brought in. And we also looked at the potential sale value of the 18 or 19 acres that could be repurposed. This area is zoned for multifamily residential, and the most likely use of the site would be residential. The city sold another property in Riverside in 2021 and received bids between $2 and $3.25 per square foot. We believe that we could expect this property to go for between $3 to $5 per square foot if it were cleared and ready for development. And that pencils out to between $2.4 and $4.1 million. So still a pretty large net loss. We also considered mothballing the main water treatment plant and making it safe, which would include dismantling the chemical systems. The plant would remain offline indefinitely, and rehab and construction would be deferred until we have a future increase in demand. So with this option, we're performing minimal ongoing maintenance to preserve what we already have in there. But the piping infrastructure would not be in place to bring it back online in short notice. So the plant would not be available for emergency use. Under this scenario, the capital cost is $0 for now, and the cost to return it to service would be determined in the future based on how the plant is to be used. Mothballing it defers those decisions until demand triggers the need for it. As for the lifecycle cost, we still need to dedicate two full-time employees to perform minimal ongoing maintenance to preserve them for future use, which accounts for the majority of the lifecycle costs you see here, eight to nine million dollars over 20 years. And next, we looked at several variations of reconfiguring the main water treatment plant to be available for use in the event of a catastrophic event that takes the, the new plant or the main supply line out of service. So that could be something like a major fire, tornado, pipeline break. And the variables set the different emergency, I'm sorry, the variables that set the different emergency options apart are the water source, the capacity, startup time, and finished water quality. So I'll break those variables down for you. What's listed on this table is options three through seven are five different emergency use options that we looked at. The differences in the variables leads to a different in total, difference in total cost for each one. Option three would have put untreated water into the distribution system to provide firefighting capacity. But it would have been untreated water, and the idea was eliminated after discussion with KDHE about the risks associated with that plan. For the remaining options, the source water is either going to be groundwater only or a blend of groundwater from the well field and surface water from Cheney reservoir. The significance of that is treating a blend is cheaper upfront, but it takes more labor to maintain, because it requires us to maintain more process equipment. because it requires us to maintain more process equipment. The startup time and the finished water quality are tied together. Softer water, like we're producing today, is ideal, but the softening process takes longer to start up than producing hard water does. Difference is about a week for one to two days for the other. That time would be critical in recovering from a catastrophe, and we think that minimizing the amount of time without water would be more important than providing soft water, which is why we focused on options four and five. Both of those have a shorter startup time but result in producing harder water. At the workshop, we talked briefly about why hardness is important. Basically, that's the mineral content of the water. The minerals are naturally occurring in the source water, and the softening process is what removes them. With harder water, some people may notice a different taste between hard and soft water. The minerals may leave a residue on glasses. And some industries sensitive to water hardness may need to adjust their process or soften their water on site to account for the harder water. That's not ideal, but we're not talking about a business-as-usual situation. We're talking about restoring service when we have no water. And the fastest way to do that is to put hard water into the distribution system. Regardless whether we're talking about hard water or soft water, either way, the water will be disinfected, and it is safe to drink. So the option recommended by staff and by the steering committee is what was shown as option five on the last slide. This option uses groundwater from the well field as our source. The treatment process would be disinfection only with no softening to minimize the startup time. To minimize the cost, we'd use a temporary disinfection system. In the event of an emergency, bringing in tanker trucks of chlorine and ammonia. The benefit of that is we can get rid of the outdated disinfection system we have now while still saving $13 million upfront cost by not building a new permanent disinfection system. The downside is there's no onsite disinfection chemical storage, and the logistics of disinfecting with chemicals from tanker trucks are more expensive if activated for an actual emergency. So if we ever had to put this plant back into service from an emergency that lasts longer than six to 12 months, we would have been better off constructing the disinfection system upfront. The construction items listed here on the third bullet represent the configuration suggested by our consultant, but this may or may not be our final configuration. This recommended option would provide us with a capacity of 45 MGD. We felt this was the minimum acceptable capacity for meeting the community's needs in an emergency situation while balancing long-term lifecycle costs. The startup time would be expected to be one or two days. Construction would take a couple of years, but after finished, it would be maintained in a standby mode and could be brought back online in one to two days or as soon as we could get the disinfection tanker trucks on site. Finished water quality, it would be compliant, safe, but hard. We need, or we expect to need, one full-time employee or an equivalent, maybe four employees for one week a month, for example. The capital cost is projected to be between $11 and $16 million, and the 20-year lifecycle cost would be $15 to $20 million, which includes the capital cost as well as the maintenance cost. Budget considerations and other comments. We currently have budgeted $24 million in the capital improvement plan for this project, and we are assuming $300,000 per year for maintenance and energy. Note that these amounts should cover construction and keeping the plant in standby mode, but this does not account for the cost of operating the plant in an emergency. That's going to depend on the nature and duration of an emergency. The construction cost may increase if we determine a different configuration is needed. Basically, that's because we've only done conceptual design work so far. The RFP will continue that design further. Lastly, we're currently exploring the possibility of water reuse, and the main water treatment plant could factor into those plans. The project we're discussing today does not preclude that from happening. It actually helps us keep our options open for a potential reuse project in the future. So this brings us to the reason we're here today. We are requesting council approval of formal concept and project delivery method, including evaluation criteria and initiation of $1 million for Phase One of a progressive design-build project. We believe progressive design-build is the best project delivery method for this project to minimize the overall cost and impact of changes as we proceed through the design process. We're also going to need the engineer to provide us with an execution plan and standard operating procedures for emergency operations. And the design-build option gives us the flexibility for that plan to be adjusted as the project progresses. If this item is approved today, we will release a request for proposals and select a vendor in accordance with the city's administrative regulation on procurement. We will return to council between Phase One and Phase Two of the project for approval of the 30% design and a guaranteed maximum price. Construction would begin next year, and we would expect it to be completed in 2028. Wichita's Charter Ordinance 228 requires city council's approval of criteria for selection of a design builder in advance of the selection. Staff recommends the criteria and maximum points that are shown here. The recommended action is to approve initiation of the project and budget, approve the selection criteria for the design-build selection, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Laura. Councilmember questions? I have several. First and foremost, can you go back to the slide regarding communities such as Colorado Springs who have multiple other backups?
Nope, that's not it.
Or their back. Yep, right here. I wanted to know, from this list of comparable cities, have any of them looked like Wichita, where we are building, already have built, a new water treatment plant in the amount of $570 million with multiple redundancies? And we have a current water treatment plant that obviously we're now talking about what to do for future needs. Have any of these other communities had something similar?
I did not dig into the details of how these different communities arrived at having multiple plants.
The reason why I bring that up is I am concerned, obviously Wichita provides about 17% of water for Kansas residents. And so our water treatment plant is going to be critical for not just Wichita, but the region. And knowing that, for instance, Kansas City, Missouri only has one as well, but they have other multiple other water resources coming in. They have redundancies. We are the redundancy. So my question to that is, have, has the consultant really looked at other communities to make sure that we're being prudent with the resource we currently have, which is the old treatment plant, as well as a new treatment plant? So now you're going to have double redundancy at the new treatment plant, but then this would create a triple redundancy with this old treatment plant. Have they considered those options from other cities? Because I feel like we need to be able to not just look at our region, but also other cities across our country.
So we limited our evaluation to the region, but you're right, our new water treatment plant does have a lot of redundancies built in. It's made and designed to operate with any one, of any one thing out of service. Obviously, it's not going to operate if we have a catastrophe that takes out the whole plant, so a major fire or a tornado, for example. So we think that by having this backup option with the current water treatment plant that we have, preserving it in a way that we could use it if we had to is the most effective way to balance the risk against the cost.
Then I'd like to go back to the slide regarding the project criteria. This is something that I've brought up before. I know that I was not on this council when the design-build option was brought forth. And I know council members who've been here more than I have in terms of length of time were in favor of this. I'm concerned because I feel like, if I remember correctly, when I keep signing these agreements, it keeps being the same company over and over again. Will that provide that company, which, can you remind me the name of the company?
Well, the company that did the initial report on this project for us was Burns &amp; McDonald.
Yep, so Burns &amp; McDonald has been, has received multiple contracts, whether it's the water treatment plant, this feasibility study. I've signed multiple other things from this bench from consent agenda items. So I'm a little concerned that there's only one company that knows our system the best. So then obviously, they would have an upper hand in knowing our system. Would that really be competitive in letting the process be truly open? Because it's a request for proposals for all. And it gets thrown out to the entire nation, who can actually help us build this? But do you think that that just gives them an upper hand, again, knowing that they created this feasibility study? And obviously, they're going to have a lot of points with experience of proposer?
No, you're right, they do have a lot of experience with us. All of our procurements are always open, and they're free to bid on this again. But you'll notice we put the highest point ratio down for the approach and understanding and approach together 60%, with the experience of the proposer being only 25%. So we do hope this will be an open, truly open bidding process where we're putting ourselves in a situation to consider anybody that wants to propose on this.
I guess I just want to make a point that I would really like to see if there are other cities that have done something similar to us, where we are in this position, where we have an old water treatment plant, and what to do with it, making sure that we are using the best, not just a company that knows us because they've been doing all these contracts, but really have been doing the work in other parts of the nation.
We can definitely include that when we're looking at the experience of the proposer. And I will also point out that in our draft RFP that we've put together, we specifically say, you do not have to use this configuration that our engineer suggested. We are open to others as well. And so we're not locking ourselves into only what they suggested.
Thank you. And this is not an insult to the company that has been doing the work. I just want to make sure that it's truly open, and we are getting the most competitive and the best here to Wichita when we want to make sure that 17% of the state's population gets water and what we're doing with this old treatment plant.
Understood.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? I see none. We'll open it up for public comment. Any individuals who would like to speak on this? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for staff. And so when I'm looking at the recommended action regarding the council approving the initiation of the project, is specifically, do we have to say option five? Or is that implied as the recommendation?
I will.
I'll jump in. I think that you can say it as the motion is read, and it will reflect the recommendation of the green sheet. I think that would be sufficient to state your intent.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I served on the steering committee with former councilmember Frye. And we talked about this quite a bit. Option five was the recommendation that was made, and that really came down to how long did we want our residents to not have access to water? And a week gives you everything you want in the soft water, and one to two days gives you water. And we know that people would need water pretty quickly. So option five was the option that we supported. We had a lot of logistical questions during the steering committee. Everybody in that room was smarter than me, so they can answer that better than I can. But everything was answered satisfactorily to where this really just seemed like it was the best option for the city in having that emergency water treatment plant. So I am supportive of the steering committee's recommendation, which is option five in the recommendation today. And it's a little bit of why, without getting into the hour, hour-and-a-half-long discussion we had about it.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some very big concerns about this. I've discussed with the city manager before, we disagree on it. The new plant was made with multiple redundancies. When we took a tour of that plant, I asked, what would it do if a tornado hit this? And the answer was, it'd have to be at F5 to really take it out of commission. Even then, some of the buildings would still not be affected. So in a flood, I don't think that's going to happen in Wichita, anyway, with our flood control. Someday, this plant will be disassembled. Maybe, might not be in my lifetime, but someday it will. It'll never be cheaper than right now to disassemble it. I also disagree with some of the assumptions. The land value of the 18 or 19 acres as only $3 to $5 an acre. When you consider that to the land it sim's, that's a residential neighborhood, not by museums, not on the river, not close to downtown. I think if you ask some commercial real estate people, well, the land that we sold for a dollar by the ballpark got sold for several million dollars. I think that can give you maybe some idea of something in between that, what the value will be for that land. So I will not be supporting this for those reasons and more. I'm not comfortable with, I just don't think it's going to cost $50 to $75 million to disassemble it. The dirt, to fill the dirt, that is a lot of dirt. It comes out to $500 a load. I don't know how much a load of dirt is anymore, but it does come out to $500 a load. Anyway, I will not be supporting it.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I was going to make a motion, but I see Councilman Ballard's on the board, so I will wait.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I think with the climate that we're in, with water and being that 17% of our state does depend on us to provide water, we need to really take care of what we have in case of an emergency. So for that, I will be supportive. And it is in my district, if you don't mind, if we're ready for a motion.
I asked a couple more questions before a motion. Thank you for all council members and feedback. I actually have a couple of questions for Gary. Gary, this building, if we do move forward with this option, I wanted to know what are other uses that this building can also be for? In other words, can it be used for some storage for the city of Wichita, for any of our departments? Can you address, this is a very large building, and I think Laura mentioned this, this is also a very big footprint of land.
Sure, I think that's possible. Once we would move into the design phase and with the proposal we have for the disinfection process, there's going to be a fair amount of this facility that wouldn't be actively used. I think anything's probably on the table to look at that as we move forward. One thing I would mention again that Laura talked about was the potential for reuse. We'll be bringing a item to the council soon for vendor selection, initial contract, to start a, what I would consider very robust reuse analysis and study. I think it's very possible, somewhere along the lines, that we would find that this facility is a good location for some type of reuse process. It would be probably a really good location for equipment, for some advanced treatment, because it's right by Hess pump station. I'll just give you, this is very high level. But if you look at the idea of we've got the most affluent coming out of our wastewater treatment plant, too, at the south end of Wichita, a lot shorter distance to get from there to this plant than it is to Wichita Water Works. And I think it's possible that maybe we look at some type of treatment there, and we could go right into the system from Hess. That doesn't mean anything at this point, that's just me speculating, looking ahead, being hopeful. I think as we get going on this reuse, we'll really start to focus on what the possibilities could be for this building. But sure, I think there's chance for storage, too, there's a lot of space there.
Thank you for the innovative idea. I know that it's still in the preliminary process, and Councilmember Tuttle serves on that task force. So I'm really excited about the opportunities for possible reuse of water. So thank you for that. The other question I had, I know that the new water treatment plant is supposed to come online next month, but due to our drought, we've had some- But due to our drought, we've had some delays in fully testing the system. Can you address, I asked this question to, to city manager Leighton, but I want this on the record. I wanted to know, are there any clawbacks, knowing that we can't fully test it because of our drought restrictions?
So I want to make sure I understand when you ask about clawbacks. Are you talking about related to the contract or?
So are there any payments that will be paid, say April 1, which is when the new water treatment plant was supposed to be fully functional?
So right now, we are less than 30 days out from taking ownership of the new plant. There were some delays due to the extreme weather during the performance testing that were not a fault of Wichita Water Partners. It was temporary issues associated with the testing that obviously our plant, just like our plant does now, can operate under those conditions. So we're projecting somewhere between April 8th and April 15th to take ownership of this plant. I do not foresee that there being any monetary ties to that by the contract. But I think because of the agreement we've come to with them and the conditions that were, they had to deal with during that period of time, but we're getting close to taking ownership of the plant.
Not quite sure that's what the mayor's asking. The mayor's asking when, when are we responsible for final payment? And is there going to be any retention for any period of time?
Oh, sorry. Well, then I did miss that. Once we, so the, the final piece of this with the performance testing is the, they've got to prove that the plant can make what we call spec water. They've got to produce water to meet regulation. We do still have one outstanding issue that has to come back to the council. When we presented change order number two sometime last fall to the city council, it included the conversion of the existing 64-inch pipeline from a raw water source to a finished water source. At that time, we, we had a partial cost, an estimated cost to do that work, but we were waiting on some final decisions from KDHE on how we had to go about that. That took a little longer than we had planned. That work is mostly done. We were waiting on some, a few final costs. Once we got into that pipeline, I'll just give you one quick example of some unexpected that we couldn't have seen. Once we took that pipeline out of service, we, we did a lot of things to that to make sure it could be used for potable water, finished water from the new water treatment plant. We found that there were some issues at certain joints within the pipes or making repairs there. Anyway, we'll be coming back to the city council at some point to reconcile that change order, which is how that was originally set up. That as of right now, I'm hoping is the final cost item we've got for the facility. After that is, council takes action on that, we would start moving toward final payment on the plant.
Not until spec water is actually.
Until spec water is, is, yes. Regardless of that timing, that, that has to happen before anything is released. And so we still are holding on to retainage. And since we're on that point, I might come back to what we talked about before on what we were doing for retainage for the extended period. So do you have that, our point? I've, I got it. Just in case this came up, I had something I wanted to show you. So thank you for asking this question because I wanted to come back to this. So last fall, you know, per the original contract, the hope was to be done with everything in September. This drought has created so many issues for us in so many ways. And we needed to get past really the higher demand periods prior to the drought restrictions being in place. So the plant was substantially complete in September of 2024. This was all part of change order number four that the city council approved. We, so, so we, we extended final completion to April 1st. So then we had this discussion and this issue about what do we do about final warranties? So the contract requires, very similar to a lot of our projects, a two-year warranty from the contractor on everything that's done out there. So with that, again, that final completion was extended to April 1st for the performance testing. The two-year contract warranty started on September 17th. So we have warranties through September of 2026. We know we have that. That was started at substantial completion. It goes through 20, September of 2026. We discussed with the council as part of that change order number four discussion, which contemplated these dates and these costs, that we felt like it was a good insurance policy to consider extending the warranties a full two years past April when we take over the plant, right? We're about ready to take over the plant. The thought was let's extend the warranties two years from now to April of 2027. We had an initial estimated cost of $1.75 million to extend those warranties, or at least the most critical ones. City council approved that as part of that budget of change order number four. And so we set out to work with Wichita Water Partners. They've got 150 subcontractors, multiple vendors. There's a lot of stuff here. This is a very unique situation compared to we would normally be with a two-year warranty on everything, right? So we started receiving numbers and multiple factors here, I think, have brought us to a different place on where we want to go with this. So some of the warranties are based on full replacement costs because this, at this point, that's really all they can do. So what that does is we, we could, if we were to consider those, we would pay a premium, a full price for something that may not even be needed. Several warranties have elevated pricing based on inclusion of smaller and lower value items that are often covered through operations budgets or can be readily kept on hand. This is not something that the, the vendors or the subcontractors are, are doing anything unfair. It's, it's, it's the situation that we're in, trying to figure out what the true value of that is because this is not even normal for them. Response times, a couple other factors here and then I'll, I'll get to the point. The, the contract under, with warranties allows a, a certain response time. A warranty language allows seven days to respond and then 14 days to develop a corrective action plan. So during that full 21-day period, it is likely that we could probably go in and make the repairs during that period of time. And it may be that we need to and not be able to wait for that. Probably one of the bigger parts of this, and we did touch on this before, is that the extended warrant, warranty period from September to April primarily covers what's going to be a lower demand period. Plants operating at lower capacity, less stress on equipment, we're less likely to see any issues during that period of time. And then kind of to that same point, we would expect, so during the performance testing that's going on now, there has been some equipment failures, not unexpected. All of those have been fixed. All of those are being repaired. All of those are being replaced like new. We would expect any major problems would make themselves apparent and known within the first year of operation, which would be covered under the two years we already have anyway. We are contemplating and we think it's the best option to decline all of those extended warranties, to keep the $1.75 million available for us to assist with repair, replacement or purchase of spare parts and equipment. Promotes less downtime. We could also use that for contract services as needed to, to offset our resources, to supplement our resources to make those repairs. So we, so having said that, then we would be responsible for any repairs after September 17th of 2026, when the full two years expires. I think it's the most prudent thing to do. I think it's responsible. I think it made sense that we went through this and looked at what those warranties might look like. But at this point in time, you know, if everything goes the way we hope it does and this plan operates the way it does and everything holds together, we would, might be able to save some of that $1.75 million where we would not have otherwise paying for those extended warranties. So when the council took action on that change order number four, which included this budget for the extended warranties, we said we would only come back to council if we were going to contemplate spending more than that. So I think at this time, we probably will plan to move forward of not accepting any of the warranties and basically just creating that budget for ourselves for repairs, so.
So really a reserve fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Gary. Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, thank you very much. I voted against that warranty for that reason. I appreciate you looking into it. I appreciate you going this route. I think it is financially prudent to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. So I know that I asked the question about the new water treatment plant and you talked about the warranty as well. Can you one more time just address that we will not give final payment to Wichita Water Partners until they meet spec water? And that, that retention date will be agreed upon between the parties?
Correct, yes. Yeah, that's the, the last big piece here. Again, the, there's still some work being done on that 64-inch pipeline, which is a part of the project. So we've got to wrap that up too. And we couldn't move to final payment until we reconcile that one final change order, which will come in front of council. But we'll, we'll, we'll start to begin that process to negotiate release of retainage when it makes sense.
Thank you, Gary. This resides in Councilmember Ballard's district.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to take the recommended action. Approve initiation of the project and budget, approve the selection criteria for the design-build selection, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures per charter, per charter ordinance number 211. This item requires 2/3 of the majority.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 6-1. Ms. Clerk, please call the next item.
Air Capital Municipal ID. Hello, Mayor and Council. Lilly Meadow City Manager's Office here to present the Air Capital Card Municipal ID Program. In May of 2024, the city committed to implementing a low-barrier I-9 compliant municipal ID card. And I-9 facilitates employment verification, providing people with more job opportunities who didn't have it beforehand. Staff researched state and federal law as well as municipal ID programs in peer cities. We did a deep dive into Detroit, Michigan, Topeka, Kansas and Kansas City, Missouri, where we reviewed application processes, proof of identity and eligibility. Staff obtained feedback and periodic, provided periodic updates to community stakeholders such as Sedgwick County, Justice Together and the Homelessness Task Force. Here are some examples of municipalities with IDs. There are around 40 cities that have ID programs and there are two currently in the state of Kansas, with it being Topeka and Kansas City, Kansas. Some benefits of a municipal ID, it creates a sense of belonging and it enables residents to access city services and potentially cash checks, open bank accounts, attend medical appointments, fill prescriptions, provide proof of identity to law enforcement, register children for school and more. We offer a broader list of acceptable documents to establish proof of identity and residency than other IDs available, and it increases access to the community. We have a goal of meeting people where they're at so that it can be truly accessible and it will be available at multiple city locations. This ID program is in line with state statute KSA 1216142. This is straight from the state's website where you, and it's recognized by state law that we can enact a municipal ID program so long as it displays not valid for state ID, which you'll see in future slides. That very boldly, it says not valid for state ID. So a little lesson on I-9, it helps people have employment eligibility. So our program follows the I-9 list from U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services where there's list A, B and C. We also have something very similar. So list A contains documents that show both identity and employment authorization. List B documents only show identity and they may demonstrate that an employee is who they say they are, but not that they are authorized to work. And list C documents show the holder is allowed to work, but typically do not have photos and thus do not prove identity. Can this ID be used to vote? No. The municipal ID does not equate to a state ID. Only state issued IDs can be used to register to vote. And in front of you, you see a Kansas driver's license and a Kansas identification card or a non-driver's license. So when you go to register to vote in the state of Kansas, you have to have one of those two. You cannot use the municipal ID as a substitution for a state ID. So the ordinance, it establishes a municipal ID program and requirements. It will be administered by the city manager's office. Applications will be available at multiple city locations and online. IDs will be produced at city hall in the multi-agency center. Enforcement provisions are there to address counterfeit cards and fraudulent uses. And once again, we are in compliance with state statute 1216142 where the card will display not valid for state ID. Residents can also be as young as 14 to obtain the card so long as they have a parent or guardian fill out the application on their behalf. And fees may be waived based on financial situation. IDs will display name, photo, address optional, date of birth, ID number, expiration date and includes security features. It will be I-9 compliant for employment purposes, which requires photo or other identifying characteristics. So it basically is going to create a document that establishes a person's identity. And proof of identity and residency documents are established by the city manager's office. And this list is subject to change as we learn more about people and how to make this as low barrier as possible. So our proof of identity and residency, like I said, follows the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services guidelines. We also add a category to establish Wichita residency. We're asking that people provide us one item from category A. If they don't have anything from A, then one from both B and C. And then one item from category D to establish Wichita residency. We spoke to the homelessness task force and they gave us feedback to make this as low barrier as possible. People can provide documents that are up to 10 years expired. So we're truly meeting people where they are at. If they haven't had the ability to update it and the way with the state or other federal entities, they can still get our municipal ID. And documents should be from entities who take reasonable, reasonable measures to verify identity and residency. So now the fun part, the designs. We have it called the Air Capital Card and it, like I said, very clearly states not valid for state ID at the top in big, bold red letters. So you can see that we also have the ability for somebody to designate their veteran status. And you can also leave off an address while still being I-9 compliant. The I-9 complacency states that you need a photo or an address, not both. So this is making it required to have a photo, but you don't have to have an address available, truly making it low barrier for people. And with the company that we're going with, they will be able to provide us a holographic graph to increase security measures, but we are working with PPD, WPD to finalize security measures. And if we don't love the name, we have an alternate name idea for anybody, for the council to help us move forward with this. So ICT ID, it is the same design, same everything, just a different name if you don't love Air Capital Card. So, and great news, the name is not in the ordinance, so it will not affect today. You just need to give us guidance on how to move forward with designing and producing the IDs. So some financial considerations, there is sufficient funding included in the 2025 adopted budget. We are estimated not to exceed $20,000 with startup and operating costs in the initial year and minimal cost to replenish supplies in the ongoing years. We looked at outside vendors, but we decided to go with an in-house Sandifer to have more cost savings and we know that they're a trusted resource. That's what HR uses to print our ID badges. And with this, we'll be purchasing hardware, software and the initial supplies. Legal consideration, the law department has reviewed and approved the ordinance as written. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance and authorize the necessary signatures. And I stand for any questions. And I also have Nate Johnson from the law department to answer, answer any and all legal questions that he can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilly. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Lilly, I have a few questions. So you had said that our identification, our identity requirements were similar, were the same as the I-9.
Similar.
Similar.
It's the same format. We mainly based it off of Detroit's municipal ID program to make it as truly low barrier and just give us a lot of options. And like I said earlier, the list can grow with feedback from the community. This is a pilot program and we'll be able to learn what road bumps we encounter and what people do actually have because we want to meet them where they're at. So the goal is to expand this list and that's why it's marked as draft because it will change.
So, so non-I-9 acceptable documents are acceptable under our identity requirements?
Yes, the ID will be I-9 compliant. You don't always have to offer up I-9 specific documents for this.
Regarding a few other additional questions, is anybody eligible for the I-9 card? Does it solely have to be a U.S. citizen? Can non-citizens also access a municipal ID card as well?
All Wichita residents 14 and above can access this municipal ID. All Wichita residents 14 and above can access this municipal ID. There is not necessarily a hindrance of where your nationality is from. You have to provide the proper documentation to obtain this. So, if people have it, that's great. There are stipulations of this. I don't know if Nate wants to.
I think a question may also come down to legal status in this country. Do you want to, if you could talk about?
And thanks, Lily. Nate Johnson with the Law Department. It kind of depends, and just on the perspective of the question, so please correct me, kind of just, I'm going to try to answer it a few ways I kind of heard it. The first is, the ordinance is drafted so that the municipal ID card is available to any Wichita resident, but a municipal ID card does not grant status or authorization to work. So, we're talking about, under the I-9 compliance, List B, and that's where we fall, and you've got to have both List B and List C. List B is the identity, proof of identity, which is why we're really going with a photograph, and that's why we kind of tie that to a lot of the documents that we have, too. If there's a photo, it establishes ID. And List B for I-9 compliance, which is our employment authorization form, really says if you've got a photograph on the ID, that's probably going to work, as long as it's issued by municipal government according to process. But there's a second component that you have to have for I-9 compliance, and that's proof of authorization to be able to work. And that'll include something else, such as a green card, or, I mean, if you fall under List A and have a passport or something like that, that establishes that in the first place. But there's things like green cards or specific authorizations from the Department of Homeland Security. That's what you have to have to have under List C. And that is, again, separate from our kind of List A, B, C, but tying it back to whether you have authorization to work, that's determined by the USCIS, U.S. Customs and Immigration Service list, which is A, and then we're talking B and C, though, and we fall under B. And hopefully, I didn't say that too many times to get confusing, but just trying to kind of keep it clear to that.
I believe that was helpful. So, List C is what establishes employment authorization in the United States. You have to have both compliantly to be verified for I-9 employment. Ours is just item B. You subsequently have to have item C for any future documents.
Yeah, and really, kind of the idea of this identity, this ID, kind of working again with this I-9 sort of list system, is to establish proof of identity. It does not, on its own, provide any authorization to be able to work, say, in this country. And just as a municipal government, not to sell ourselves short, but we can't provide that kind of authorization that the federal government can.
In terms of, we're looking at not voting eligible. Did we confirm, so I reached out to the election office today. They hadn't heard from city government. Did we reach out to the Secretary of State's office? I wasn't able to get ahold of them today.
Well, and I did not, but I did look into that issue and appreciate the question there. And there was no one really to ask for some kind of permission or authorization for this. The closest I could find was maybe sort of the entity that we file charter ordinances with, and that's not necessarily an authorization or permission. And kind of, the nice thing about that statute, KSA 1216142, it does provide some restrictions, namely that this does not qualify as a state ID, and we have to have that "not valid for state ID." But the fact that that statute exists does provide recognition from the state that we have authority to implement a municipal ID if we would like to through ordinance.
So, the subsequent question I had to that was regarding notary publics. So, because it wouldn't be permissible by state ID, would a notary be able to accept it as identification? Or would that not be compliant with state law?
I do not know if notaries require, and I don't believe they do require a state, yeah.
Don't know either. I think we just have to look at what notaries.
Because I'm, I'm a notary, and so I require some form of identification. Yeah, I mean, I'm a notary, so I require identification when someone wants something notarized. And so, am I able to accept this document? Am I able to accept the Air Capital Card, or whatever we're going to call it? Or do I have to use a state ID? I think training would probably be needed for notaries if it wasn't acceptable.
And I think it just depends on whether the rule for notaries is that you have to have some sort of state or federal level identification. If it just says identification, I think this would probably qualify, although the issue wouldn't be necessarily one for the city to enforce, because I do know that notaries, at least, are registered through the state rather than the city. And I think maybe that ties back to this, how you can't use this ID to vote. And even if it's a municipal election, you have to have some sort of state ID to demonstrate your identity to be able to vote. And that's why it's not valid as a state ID document. So, if notaries require a state ID document, and again, kind of assuming here, if they do require that, this will not qualify. But if they just need some sort of identification that is verified by a government, or whatever kind of language might be tied to that, then this would qualify to establish identity.
Yeah. So, when we're, let's say, implementing the ID, we're giving somebody an ID, I want to make sure that there's significant training of letting the individual know that this can't be used for voting, because I would hate if someone showed up to a polling place, tried to use it, and that was the only identifying information they had, and then they were turned away, and then they were disenfranchised through the process as well. That would be a concern I have, is our education, because it's not permissible on the state level, that people would know that they can't use it for that. The last question I have, we had talked about, I think it's subsection C, that says the Administering Department shall establish a reasonable application fee. I know it says that those who can't afford to pay such a fee will see a full or partial waiver. Is their will just to remove, if we're causing a, if we want a low-barrier ID, the highest barrier is going to be that they can't pay for the ID. So, I think that's likely not necessary. So, I might bring that up to discussion, but.
And that's all up to you. So, yeah, we have that included to try to cover the initial cost that Lily referred to in her presentation. And I think, and not to speak for the administering department, that we might have in the future, the consideration would be if you're not able to pay for it, kind of like you establish other fee waivers under systems we have, or maybe kind of like a poverty affidavit style that we have for municipal and state courts, then you wouldn't have to pay it. Now, I think that, that, I will say, that provision is included to try to account for that exact situation. But if this body wants to remove the fee requirement, that, yeah, there's no legal requirement that we have to have that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the, all the work you guys have done over the past year or so on this. Sorry, just two quick questions here. One, I, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see in the presentation the back of the card.
We don't have a back of the card produced at this moment. We could put the holographic wrap on it, because it's a sample or just a really basic orbit-looking thing, but we, at this moment, do not have a backside. So, it could just be blank.
Plan on having like a barcode back there, or anything like that for people to scan?
Potentially. We could always add that in the future, but at this moment, we don't have a barcode designed. It's more so the ID number is the, it's very differentiating for people, rather than a barcode.
Okay, yeah. Councilmembers Glasscock and Johnson and I sat through a riveting hearing a couple of weeks ago, where we talked about scanners with, like, maybe at the liquor store or something like that, or voting IDs. I'm sorry, I'm just curious what it would read, you know, probably comes up as no information being passed along. I was just kind of curious about that with some of the scanners that we have.
I know, oh, sorry. In the future, we do have the ability to chip the cards, working with Sandifers, so how it, here at the city, we're able to badge into certain offices, certain buildings. Eventually, we can chip the cards so that people can access the MAC.
Okay.
And if I might, real quick, Councilmember, I vaguely recall that hearing as well. If we don't have a barcode on the back, then nothing would come up. So, kind of in that scenario, it would maybe help to differentiate from state ID a little bit, and would be a little bit cheaper, too. But again, this ID would not be able to use for, be used for things that you would require state ID for, such as those kinds of purchases.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I guess the second question has to do with, we talked about an address on there, including a P.O. box, or, or just a regular address. Does that wrap into the MAC? Is that still an option with the MAC, to have the MAC address?
At this moment, no housing staff does not have the proper facilities or the abilities to truly run a mailing system there. Right now, United Methodist Open Door offers a mail service so that people can obtain mail and get packages, but right now, putting the ID is not necessary, because it can still be I-9 compliant without an address.
Okay, and then, yeah.
If I might know real quick on that, too. The way the ordinance is drafted, though, is really anywhere that someone is able to receive mail. So, if there is a situation where you're staying at someplace, maybe you can receive mail, and there are some opportunities that maybe Open Door at the MAC in the future. I'm not saying anything certain, or that that is necessarily an option yet, but anywhere that you could receive mail, that can count as an address that we put on this card, because it just provides a means of contact, and that could include a P.O. box as well. But we tried to just be as flexible with, as possible, with the address opportunity or option to account for kind of different situations that people might be.
So, put a pin in it in regards to the MAC, you know, later on when we get it established. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Lily, thank you so much for all your hard work. I know you've been working really hard on this. And my question is, how is this different from when this opportunity has been explored in the past with past councils? What is different with this opportunity?
I believe the difference is the I-9 complacency and the push to get it done following the commitment of the city to produce an I-9 compliant ID. Staff looked into it back in 2022, and it was more so community feedback, seeing what cities do have it, rather than pushing forward with the program. That was one of my projects, was seeing this come to fruition, if possible.
Mayor, Councilmember, if I could, I think we tried to overreach the first time. We were trying to include too much, and maybe incorporate the library card, and maybe a city service card in with just a basic ID. And that's one of the reasons why we didn't pursue it much further. And that's why the simplified version, especially after asked by the homeless providers and the advocates, made a lot of sense. So, that's why we narrowed it.
Thank you. Attorney Magana.
Councilmember Glasscock, in response to your question about notary, just reviewing the Kansas Notary Handbook, it appears that the standard is satisfactory evidence or personal knowledge, and it does include, among other things, government-issued non-driver identification card, or other form of government identification that contains a signature and a photograph of the person, and is satisfactory to the notary.
Any further questions for Lily? Just have a couple, just to reiterate, I think, some of the messaging. Number one, because it already says "not valid for state ID," and I have heard some concern regarding making sure that voting is also not going to be compliant for this, can that also be part of the verbiage, "not valid for state ID or voting?" Because I believe that it's the part of education that really is going to be difficult. We can reiterate messages, but if it's not on that card, it might not register. So, would that be a possibility?
It could be a possibility. I just know we're following state statute, where it's just saying the actual language of "not valid for state ID." We can train our staff so that it's very clear that you cannot use this for voting, and I can add that to the training manual for staff. Nate?
And, yeah, I think that's, yeah, definitely correct, but just want to emphasize, the language that we have on the card here is precisely the language that's from the state statute, and we do just generally feel a bit more comfortable tying it, at least, to the state statute as it is. But there, you know, we provide some authority to the administering department to make some changes as well, but kind of keeping the ordinance tied to the state statute was the idea here, at least.
Would it conflict with state statute if we said "not valid for state ID or voting?"
I don't think that it would. I think it's just a bit more questionable when we stray from the specific requirement that we have from the state.
Because I, I'm still concerned with community. I know that you will be training staff, but at voting locations, these are volunteers oftentimes at polling locations. I just, back to the not disenfranchising voters, if they brought this ID, and by any chance, they don't, don't remember to bring their state-issued ID, I don't want them to be disenfranchised. So, can it said, can it say "for voting"?
Again, I think that it can, but I just think it raises some complications, potentially, to have that when we stray from what the state statute.
Mayor, we can play with that. I think if we maintain the language as it exists, "not valid for state ID," we can then say "not valid for election, for voting" below that. That way, we've concluded the language from the statute, and we've added another clarifier. We'll do that.
I would like to see that. We can have discussion regarding that, but then that would make it very clear. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Another question regarding residency. I know that we added item or category D to establish Wichita residency. Out of the, all these options, theoretically, how long would someone have to be a Wichita resident for them to obtain this? Could I move in the community tomorrow, somehow get one of these? Like, what would be the fastest I could get one of these, to then establish residency?
That depends on the specific agency. We accept documentation within the previous 60 days. So, if you go to a shelter and you get a letter saying, "I stayed here last night," that could establish your residency, but that truly depends on the particular agency.
So, someone could move here tomorrow, and they could claim Wichita residency if they received that, and then they could begin receiving all Wichita services immediately the next day, based on us now offering a municipal ID as a resident of the community?
Theoretically, if you can also provide items from category B and C, or something from A. It's not just establishing Wichita residency. You have to establish other items for us to provide your proof of identity.
So, reading this kind of matrix, one category from A, would I then have to provide one from D and A?
Yes.
So, then, or if I do, if I don't do A, then I would have to, I would have to B, C, and D?
Mm-hmm. D is always required. It's just, is it A and D, or is it B, C, D?
So, following up to those questions, and this is getting really into the weeds, but these are a lot of options. So, I'm trying to think of every possible pairing you can make on here as well. So, let's say you do B and C. B and C don't mean necessarily that you lived in Wichita more than a day. I don't think there's anything on there that would have that requirement. So, then, at that point, it would solely rely on option D to establish your Wichita residency. So, I could move in and get one of these items. So, let's say I get a bill from a local doctor. So, I could come in, I could go to the doctor's office, I could get a bill that day, and I become a Wichita resident by this definition?
Yes, if you can also provide us other documentation, providing.
But those other documentations wouldn't provide Wichita residency. They would just provide?
Identity.
Identity documents.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that is theoretically correct. We don't establish, like, an amount of time that you have to have lived in Wichita to establish residency, but that's generally not how legal residency is necessarily established. Things like utility bills and having an address confirmation establish that you are living here for a period of time. And I guess you could move elsewhere right after that, but we also kind of review these somewhat regularly. There are other provisions for that in the ordinance. And then, yeah, I mean, that is kind of what legal residency is, kind of having an address, or one of the ways to qualify for that.
I guess the only concern I would have regarding the list and item D is someone could move here tomorrow from another community, begin receiving services immediately, and I don't, I think there would be a fear that that would spread. You would have people move here because you could obtain a municipal ID immediately in the community, and then be offered all services from day one.
I suppose so, but I guess that's probably theoretically possible for a lot of people that have the ability to just move to Wichita anyway, maybe, and have a utility bill, and have an actual address that they're moving to, and have like an address confirmation from USPS or something like that, and having a, and this is a little different than the address component of the ID itself, where that's not necessarily required, because you actually have to move to an address or have some sort of place to, there are a few other options as well to be able to qualify, but.
I'm just thinking of other communities, when we've talked with WPD, of other communities actually moving people to our community. This would, in some ways, incentivize that if now individuals come to the community and day one be able to get that, you know, let's say you're taking people from, I'm just throwing out random towns, Tulsa, Oklahoma City, and then they're dropping them off here, knowing that you could immediately receive a municipal ID, access to all services. There will only be a concern of exacerbating people coming in to receive services. So, that's more of a policy discussion, but that would be a question I'm interested in having. It would be less of a legal question.
The card itself doesn't provide you additional services. That person, we are going to continue to resi- That person, we are going to continue to resist people being transported here solely in order to take advantage of the services at MAC. And we've, the council has made that clear. We've had that discussion before. All this could do is help someone maybe apply for a job. They could come and somebody could move here and get MAC services from day one. They don't have to ever apply for a card, an I D. card, to be able to get those services. It's a low barrier facility, and if they follow those basic rules that we have regarding drug use and alcohol, other than that, there's probably, it doesn't matter if they have an I D. card or not, they're going to get those services.
Status quo, dude.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. I was just going to say the same thing. Basically, you can get a lot of the services already. I think the card would just allow you to maybe explore some additional services or resources that you might not be able to, but you can get a lot of the basic.
Right, and I think our providers can talk better about that than I can, but what I commonly hear is the ability to cash a check, an assistant check that someone receives. That would be one of the reasons. And also to help then with employment is another one I've heard.
Thank you. I see no further questions from this bench. We will now open it up for public comment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Nancy Brown. I reside at 11707 East Crestwood, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Justice Together, of which I am a board member, as well as serving on the Homelessness Steering Committee. Justice Together and the 39 congregations that are part of this shared justice ministry celebrate the mayor and the council's leadership in putting forward a pragmatic solution to help address a serious barrier for those who struggle with homelessness. Throughout our research efforts over the past year, first responders, service providers, employers, housing providers, and people directly impacted, all people with varying vantage points and perspectives, all said the same thing. For many, getting an I D. is a serious barrier to accessing critical community services, employment, and housing. This is why we called on Mayor Wu and City Manager Leighton to enact an I-9 eligible, low-barrier photo I D. program at our first annual Nehemiah Assembly last May. At that assembly, around 1,400 people, representing 55 congregations, celebrated the commitment made to do just that. Today, as we see this commitment come to fruition under this council's leadership, we, along with the stakeholders and people who will most benefit from this program, celebrate each of you, as well as the city staff, including City Manager Leighton, Assistant City Manager Martin, and the legal department, who put in thorough and diligent work to make sure that all bases are covered while ensuring that the program is in keeping with the needs of the people of Wichita. Thank you for accepting our invitation to answer God's call to do justice with us together as one unified community. And if you haven't already, please do mark your calendar to join us again this year for our second Nehemiah Assembly on Thursday, May 8th at 6:00 P. M. at the W S U Metroplex. On behalf of Justice Together, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, and thank you to Justice Together. Are there any other individuals who would like to speak?
That was me, Jen. Practice makes perfect. I guess I didn't know that this was a time to speak on this, and I just want to say, first of all, thank you guys for putting everything together. She went like, I have been out here, like I said, and like you guys have done a lot of research on that, and I, like the I-9, that is very, very important. And again, I, I'm just asking, I don't know if this is a final vote on this, if they can maybe just take the time, because the only reason I ask this is I would hate to wait the title for a municipal I D. on something that I think that maybe a little bit more research and inclusiveness can address. I, like, they have been very, very thorough on people's standpoint from, I believe, from a housed, trying to adapt to a situation that hopefully they've never been a part of, but speaking out from somebody that who's been, like I said, problematically homeless because of the main issue, not having identification. I have children that are almost, my son is 28, and again, he's never been to jail. He doesn't have any way to get any I D. And so I thought, like, I've put a lot of thought into this, but being homeless, not having computer, I just only have a phone for like the last four months, putting something together and coming up here to present some ideas. I mean, a big thing that like I've watched, like with the homeless and the people being moved and centered, the best thing to for Wichita is to not to move our homelessness and to just, but to give them inclusiveness, you know? It's in order for some of these problems to be addressed, the I D. For the municipal I D., I spoke to Officer Nate with the Hot Team a couple of years back, and I was like, you know, why don't they use police, like some of their databases? Some of those ways, like not having an address, not having a verifiable, some people are just afraid of police contact, they have warrants, they have things. I'm just asking, I think maybe for maybe a little bit more time, so we can just maybe, now this is where I have problems speaking. I have a lot in my head, and I have a little time, and it's counting down, but I know my barrier that I've had over and over and over is going down to the D M V., asking for this. I know that I've ordered a birth certificate, and we did that through grassroots, but the amount of time that it takes to get a birth certificate and then the identification, my question, would this municipal I D. be able to be used for things like requesting birth certificates? Because that's one loophole we seem to be like tied up in is if you need to get identification to get a birth certificate, but you need your birth certificate to get an identification. You know, how can we like circumvent that? And I also know that like with the Kansas, for voter registration, one of the options that the registration board has made possible, that they will help you get your birth certificate and your I D. in order to become a voter. But this is, like I said, it's just a lot of cross, a lot of cross challenges. And the consistency, I'm with this, I'd brought up financial barriers that some people have, and I heard you did address the fact that, you know, if it's a zero barrier, maybe waiving the fee altogether, you know? And also like supporting documents, getting the other things. If we don't have one proof of address, you know, a lot of, a lot of places require any, like I've lost everything in a fire, and when they ask for that, and this is repeating something I said earlier, you know, trying to find just that one piece of mail, that one piece of anything, and with the municipal I D., would that be able to go? A lot of people, like prior tax returns, go to your H. and R. block and pull that documentation, you know, prior jobs, but they all want a form of identification to prove who you are in order to obtain proof of who you are. That's, I guess I'm just asking, you know, with the thoroughness that they've done, I just want to make sure that like everything kind of has been evaluated from not just the standpoint of like the I-9 getting jobs, because everybody out here, like, we would have a lot less homeless if more homeless people could get jobs, you know? More people would have places to live if they could obtain places to live, but those I D.s right now are our barriers. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I will just ask one question to City Manager and to the council. I know that, given that we had a conversation about golf carts, and it went back to district advisory boards, was this necessary to go back to any of your district advisory boards to gain more feedback, such as Ms. Sarah, who is asking for, I guess, a pause? I see none. So I feel like the council members who represent the six districts have heard their feedback. City Manager, I know that this is really the intention from the get-go is so that individuals who are facing homelessness have an opportunity to have a municipal I D. to then be able to connect to the resource of a job, which is what Ms. Sarah over here has mentioned. So thank you very much again to your staff for trying to move this forward with lots of thought. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. In the presentation earlier, we did bring up the fact that I believe this could evolve as well. So as we see some of these shortcomings and barriers, like being described, we can come back and help address some of these. So is that kind of along the lines of addressing maybe some of the issues further down the road?
This, in a way, this goes back to a little bit to what Councilmember Ballard asked me. We've narrowed the focus to make this a low-barrier I D. primarily for our homeless population. And so for that reason, the staff would not be opposed to eliminating the fee, because that's our target market. Now, you're, over time, there are probably two ways that we would look at modifying the program. One, if we find out that we have unnecessarily created some obstacles or there's some pitfalls that we didn't anticipate, and then we would adjust the program. And then, over time, we could look at whether we want to broaden the use of the card. I think the mayor and I had talked early on about a model in Kansas City where it's a municipal I D. available to the entire community, and no one's blocked from getting one now, but as a result of that, they talked about getting discounts on city services, having businesses recognizing the value of the card and giving it, you know, discounts for their services. But that seemed like a lot to try to accomplish now, and even gets back into the naming of the card, Capital City versus I C T. I D. So long answer to your question. I do think this will evolve over time, and but right now, we're trying to hit the most immediate need, the one we know that it faces the community.
Thank you, City Manager. We will continue with public comment.
Thank you all for letting me come to the podium. I am a driver's license is state of Oklahoma, and I am here, and I have a Hall of Famer, you know? I am, I've played former basketball, and it is in my genes, I say Hall of Famer as well, the state of Oklahoma and known nationally. One of the things that I take a look at here is that one of the residents, being a resident, and you talked about programs to, programs to allow to go to a shelter or so forth, I take a look at also if a person was a homeless, and this is talking about this category here, homeless and had a P O. box, one of the things that I take a look at is, we're talking about the statutes also of the state and being able to vote, being able to vote, and I know that it is already, it is already, we've already went through that as well, but able to go into another term as well, and looking at these types of things that has already been done in statutes and so forth. And you take a look at residency, you take a look at P O. boxes, and you take a look at the rights to vote, the rights to be able to vote on any type of thing, whether you have a residency or whether you have a residency or not, being able to have the capacity to be able to state how it is to function as a human being, living anywhere than in a home or on the street corner, how it affects us, how it affects us all as human beings, having a place over our head and safety and safety outside, inside and outside. My concern for all states, not only the city of Wichita, but all states being under the United States of America, also in the country and other world as well, is that we take a look at where we are as citizens, where we are as citizens, number one, where we are as citizens, to be able to get any type of identification, identification, to be able to drive identification, to be able to work identification to barriers of anyone as separating us as classes of high, medium, and low classes, as it is a status quo that we have in the United States of America, that divides us in states and lines and also divides us also in counties and regions and districts of why there is a division within all of us. And so the division that we see that takes place in the United States, saying that it is united, it is united, number one, it is united to be together, it is united to be as one, under, as a dollar bill, you say, under God we trust or under God we trust. And so taking a look at status quo's of low income, high income, medium income, and homelessness of having a roof over your head, to be able to make a barrier over any class and putting one lower than the other because you have money to put a roof over your head. And so I stand before you all as, as a resident, my driver's license just has, does say the state of Oklahoma. It is expired in April for 30, 2025. I have been here for some months and do not have a residency, residency, a roof over my head, but I have been here for some months now, but being, wanting to be able to, if need be, get a driver's license as well for all identifications and so forth, for businesses, purposes, and so forth, if that is needed, and if that is needed as well. And so I stand before you all in coming to this council and all of the agenda meetings and all the agendas that we have here today, all of the agendas that we have talked about, and all of them that we have stated, and therefore not just homelessness, but all that we have talked about today. And so as a resident of the state, as my driver's license does say, and it's not expired until 4, 4, 2025, the 30th of the end of the month, I stand before you all as a citizen, a citizen of the United States of America, right? And so very concerned of all places, of all places, under all that we have talked about today, not only on the statuses of homelessness, but also how that has divided us as a United States of America, as citizens, as citizens, not to be able to vote, but citizens, that is one of the main reasons you'd be able to talk about these types of things. And so we put someone down because they don't have a dollar bill or able to be able to get a job under disabilities or any type of areas that we've talked about today. And so again, I want to thank all of you all, Mayor, all of you all, under the different districts, I want to thank you, allowing me to come forward and state concerns as a citizen of the United States of America, also under the driver's license with the address that is stated under the driver's license, but has been here in Kansas and Wichita, the city of Wichita, for some time and wanting to look at these types of issues as well. So I tell you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you state your name one more time so I can remember?
Yes, it is Tamara Gracie. It is also, if you want to look that up, it is Tamara Janine Gracie. That would be the full correct, T. A. M. A. R. A., Janine, G. E. A. N. I. N. E., Gracie, G. R. A. C. E. Y. Thank you.
Thank you, Tamara. We will continue with public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I think a lot of my fears were answered during the comments, so thank you, Lilly, for that. Thank you, Bob, for a lot of clarification, and Nathan as well. There are some things that I would like changed in it, and so I'd be interested for my colleagues. I would like to eliminate the fee required and 3. C. I think that's just another barrier that's unnecessary when we're specifically trying to target low-income Wichitaans. I would also like the name changed to City of Wichita Municipal I D. Make it as matter-of-fact as possible. I C. D. I D. sounds very similar to Air Capital I D. It's cute. I like it, but I think for something for this purpose, the state of Kansas I D., city Wichita I D., U. S. passport, it makes it more of an official document. So it'd be something I would be interested changing, interested in hearing conversations from colleagues. I like Mayor Wu's suggestion of adding not valid for state I D., not valid for voting, because I don't want people to be disenfranchised and think that they can show up to the polls with that. And then I would just like us to communicate with the Kansas Secretary of State's Office and Election Office so they can make sure that they train their upcoming poll workers so we don't have disenfranchisement as well. So those would be the suggestions that I would be interested in.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you to Lilly. I really appreciate all your work, and as a management fellow, we're so glad that you joined our community, and we hope you'll stay for a very long time because you do outstanding work. So thank you to you and all the other staff. I also want to thank our homelessness providers. I heard from several of them who said that this is something that they're supportive of. Thank you, our speakers today, Justice Together, Ms. Price, our new friend from Oklahoma. We're glad that you came and provided some feedback on this. I do agree with Councilmember Glasscock. I like I C. T. I D. better. Air Capital card wasn't really jiving with me, but I'm not going to let that be the reason not to do this, right? We can figure that out. My biggest question or concern, I guess, and not really question, but like a challenge to staff and maybe like a future thank you to comms, is just getting the word out to the community. I proudly serve on the Union Rescue Mission Board, and yesterday, I think it was yesterday, I was in a meeting with Wichita Police Department and Department of Corrections, talking about parolees specifically and trying to get them enrolled in programs. And this would be an outstanding place. If we can do this at the MAC, could we take it to Union Rescue Mission? You know, things like that, but even just to let the community know, and then also, you know, community members who may see the I D. and understand what it is. And then also finally, any concerns that I have about it being a state I D., or I heard questions about it being used to be able to vote. questions about it being used to be able to vote, have been alleviated. So, the last thing is, I'd be interested in if staff could come back, maybe annually or biannually, or just send us a report. How many people are using this? And if we have a goal of blank, and we're not reaching the goal, then what are we going to do to try and get that goal? Because if we've gone through all this work and all this effort, and people aren't using it, it's for naught. So, we need to make sure the program is successful. So, thanks again to all who were involved, and looking forward to getting an ID. Talk to you soon.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Great work, Lilly. I could tell how much work you put into it from the presentation, so, great job. Always thanks to Nate. I am terrible at names. I was going to throw out the keeper card, but doesn't sound like that works. But, no, great presentation. I'm supportive of this. I think it's a great step forward to help out some of our most vulnerable folks and get towards getting them access to a lot more things that they need. I do support everything Councilmember Glasscock said as well. I think that helps out, too. So, I am supportive and looking forward to making this happen.
Thank you, councilmembers. Given that there were some changes or suggestions for the card, does the ordinance need to reflect, number one? I don't see any objection to removing the fee, which would, that would, again, make it much more low-barrier. I don't see any objection to that. So, can we remove the fee portion?
I think you can just include those items in the motion, if you would like.
Okay. And then, the name of the card being very specific in its name, Councilmember Glasscock.
I was ready to make a motion with those changes, unless you want to make a motion with those changes, so.
I'm going to ask just a couple more questions. Will it prevent us from moving forward if we don't have the name of this card? Can that still be worked out?
We're, we're ready to order the equipment tomorrow, and hopefully, get that in place in a few weeks. So, we'd like to get the name. I'd not, I'd like not to come back and have to get approval, so if, Councilmember Glasscock may have a motion for us, so.
Sure. So, we'll continue with that. And then, the addition of the verbiage, not valid for voting immediately after not a state-valid ID. That should not be a problem, is that right?
Also correct.
Okay. Very good. And then, I really appreciated Councilmember Tuttle's suggestion of a year from now, coming back with a progress report, knowing how many individuals have utilized the ID card, the municipal ID would be a good metric. So, I would like that to also be part of the record, that we'd like a report yearly. In addition, serving on the MAC board, I would also like to make sure that this will be launched at the MAC. We're trying to remind community that all services will be channeled to the MAC, which will have its new name, but it's at Ninth and Main Street. And so, if all these services are at MAC, the more that providers continue to channel their energy and volunteer service to the MAC, it would be very helpful, so we're not doing divergent jobs all around the community. So, I would like that also to be on the record, that we'd like MAC to be the location for this ID card.
Mayor, good, I'm glad you brought that up. We had also anticipated issuing them here at City Hall, so if that's not acceptable, what you can do is solely at the MAC. We just thought it'd be, we have the ability to do it here with very little change in staffing or procedures.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I think logistically, it has to be at another location besides the MAC, because you can't go into the MAC unless you're going to stay at the MAC, like you can't just go in. So, let's say that, you know, I don't know, Megan Lovely wants to get an ID, she couldn't go to the MAC to get one. I think it would just be logistically impossible to have it only there. So, I think it needs to be at City Hall and the MAC, and then, I don't know if the system's portable, I don't know what it looks like, but I'd like to see it a roadshow to the other homeless shelters.
The idea, Councilmember Tuttle?
So, yes, it would begin here at city of Wichita, which then lends to the name, the city of Wichita Identification Card, or Wichita Identification Card. Is there any objection to a specific name from the bench? To streamline it, Wichita Identification Card would be the easiest.
We could do an online competition, similar to Name the Snowplows? No?
Can we get to a motion?
We digress, and I'm hearing some chatter. Thank you, Councilmember Glasscock. City of Wichita is the official name of this governing body, so since this governing body would be issuing it, it should be the city of Wichita Identification Card. So, I would be in favor of that. I see no objection. All right. I will give the honors to come. Sounds great. Well, first and foremost, I wanted to say thank you to Justice Together. I know that you have gathered a lot of dedicated community members to try to advocate for something to help our homeless population, and I'm very grateful that you keep asking and keep wanting to be part of the process. Nancy, I asked you to be part of the homelessness task force, because I knew that there needed to be a seat at the table for Justice Together. And so, I am grateful that you guys are still active and will continue to be active as the multi-agency center will come online next month. So, it is my honor to motion to approve the ordinance with the changes of elimination of fees, the name to the city of Wichita municipal ID, and adding not valid for voting.
Second.
Sorry. And authorize the municipal, and authorize a municipal ID in the city of Wichita and authorize necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes unanimously, seven zero.
I might add that. I seconded that, not Dalton Glasscock. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Business Services Agreement with Create Campaign, Inc.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, City Manager's Office. Stand before you this evening, presenting to you a business service agreement with Create Campaign Incorporated. We've been working with Create Campaign for a while now, trying to figure out how we can come alongside and help kind of support the work that they're doing. You heard earlier this evening from Mary Beth Jarvis and Nextus around the investment that we're trying to make into small business and growing small business. Small business is the heart of our community, and here's just another opportunity to continue to invest in small businesses and help foster and grow. So, Create Campaign's involved in, and really hosts and supports Spark Community Business Academy. It's an entrepreneurial education and technical assistance program. It's a nationally-recognized 12-week academy. There's some really good metrics around Spark, 92% graduation rate, 83% reporting that their businesses strengthened as a result of participating in it, 53% reported an increase in the owner's draw. So, by entering into this business service agreement with Create Campaign, the city's support would be able to offset some of their operational expenses, so that they can continue to provide the high-quality, accessible entrepreneurship education of our diverse entrepreneurs. This is sort of the one-year program from January 1 of this year to December 31 of this year. Includes alumni coaching and programming, cohorts, coaching for past and current cohorts, technical assistance for past and current cohorts, and then, Create Campaign would also record and report metrics within 60 days following conclusion of the cohorts. The one-year agreement's for $50,000. Funding's available in the 2025 Economic Development Fund budget. Laws reviewed and approved the agreement as to form, and the recommendation is to approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures. That concludes staff's report. At this time, I'd like to introduce Christina Long from Create Campaign. She wanted to say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you for your perseverance and your leadership. I'm Christina Long, President and CEO of Create Campaign, headquartered at 2333 East 21st Street North. Thank you for considering this business services agreement that supports our Spark Community Business Academy. Wichita's entrepreneurial heritage is distinct, and we're honored to do our part to provide nationally-recognized entrepreneurship education, technical support, and capital to help individuals seeking our services to thrive, particularly through this business academy. Where do we and Spark fit into the entrepreneurial ecosystem? Because you are hearing from several of our partners tonight. So, Create Campaign provides access and capital. Our access focuses on entrepreneurship education, access to entrepreneurship opportunity, as evidenced by the à la carte commercial kitchen incubator that is in District 2 at Boston Recreation Center, and access to business capital. We perform our work through key partnerships, and this services agreement represents another opportunity for Create Campaign and the city to align on our shared goals of creating economic impact through entrepreneurship. I want to say real quickly, to emphasize just a few points, supporting this services agreement means you're supporting entrepreneurs in each of your council districts. Of the current 20-person cohort, 20% represent District 1, 30% represent District 2, 15% represent District 3, and 10% represent each of the subsequent districts as well. Supporting this services agreement means that you're joining with more than 60 Wichita-area organizations and partners who have opened up their venues and organizations in order to host these business academy sessions, as well as fieldwork. They include InTrust, Fidelity, Martin Pringle, Greater Wichita Partnership, Ring-a-Rang, and so many more. Additionally, supporting this services agreement means you're helping Create Campaign to broaden our pool of funders who are committed to keeping this program and curriculum affordable and accessible, so that we can have greater economic impact. Several of our impact stats have been read, but just want to share just a few quick more. Of the 132 graduates, 91 businesses have been strengthened, as you heard. There have been 21 new LLC filings. Again, we want businesses to operate as legally-recognized entities in the state. Hiring's, five of our businesses reported additional hirings. Business capital, almost $130,000 specific to Spark graduates has been approved. There have been two successful trademark filings for the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office. 14 businesses and growing have expanded into a brick and mortar within the first year or two after graduating from Spark. The list goes on. I will say this to say, as Rising Tyne Capital, our national curriculum holder states, excellence is Create Campaign's signature. So, I want to thank you all for helping us to maintain an excellent and economically-impactful entrepreneurship education in Wichita. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Any questions?
Thank you, Christina. Any questions for staff or to Christina? I see none. I simply wanted to say thank you for your work, and I know that Councilmember Johnson and I, during one of our evening-time meetings before coming here, attended the à la carte grand opening, so thank you very much for what you're doing in District Number 2 with the incubator, with the kitchen. I see no questions from, from the bench, so we will now open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. I will move to approve the business services agreement and authorize necessary signatures.
Second.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Due to a potential conflict of interest, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Councilmember Johnson? We have a motion and a second by Vice Mayor Johnston. Any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes six to zero with one abstention. Ms. Clerk, please call the next item.
Business Services Agreement with Wichita Independent Business Association.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, again, Troy Anderson, City Manager's Office. And I'd be remiss to round out the evening if I didn't bring a business service agreement associated with Wichita Independent Business Association. We have representatives from WEBA here today that would like to come up and say a few words when I'm done, but real quickly, I'll run through. This is a partnership that we've been involved in since 2016, again, supporting small business and the small-business ecosystem. In 2023, the most recent agreement City Council approved with WEBA to perform sort of three programs and services. One was around business solution seminars. They added a women's leadership alliance, and the third one was to grow the Startup Plus community. And 2024, City Council approved a renewal that also supported Business Forward, which was a small-business resource center for early-stage startups looking to grow and scale. And then, last year, we really challenged WEBA to start developing a database of sort of small-business metrics. They immediately connected with Wichita State University Center for Economic Development and Business Research. They've started the conversations in and around, how are we developing a database and small-business metrics that help us better understand how programs and services, such as the ones that are being offered by WEBA, such as the ones that you just approved through, how are they helping to continue to grow and sustain our small-business ecosystem? So, that database needed to be consistent with industry standards, analyzing performance, and then can be used to effectively measure the growth trajectories of the small businesses. So, a little bit of success celebration with 2024's Level Up Program. I won't read through all of this. There are all of these numbers in the staff report. Same with the Startup Plus community, had some really good success stories from 2024. They'll continue those into 2025. Again, continuing to foster the Level Up Program, grow the Startup Plus community, expand Business Forward Initiative, and to continue to collaborate with Wichita State University Center for Economic Development and Business Research. We've also established some new performance measures, including, within each of those categories, increased participation by 5%, develop and launch five seminars, and then, again, continue to demonstrate an increase in overall business health as it relates to each of those programs. So, the 2025 one-year agreement's for $100,000. Funding's available in the 2025 Economic Development Fund budget. Laws reviewed and approved the agreement as to form, and the recommendation is to approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures. And again, we have representatives here from WEBA. I'll introduce Wendell Funk, who wanted to say a few words.
Thanks, Troy. Appreciate being here. Thank you all. I did bring some of my team along, so you can see over there, our chairman of our board is Josh Turner, and my team members, Jennifer Willetts and Jacqueline McInarney, as well as Ashley Richmond. And tonight, I really appreciate the opportunity for us to celebrate small business and entrepreneurs, and, you know, the great successes that we heard about Nextus and the programs that you invested in, and Mary Beth, and all that she's doing, and with Christina, and the programs that she's doing, and now you're investing in that. And just love all the, the coordination that we can have and working together to help small business and to continue to invest in small business and entrepreneurs. It's so important, and so, we, we really appreciate that. And as far as WEBA goes, you know, the long history, initially, it was all about sort of keeping WEBA alive. But with the investment that you've been willing to make into WEBA over the past number of years, you're now, you've now, we've now grown to over 700 small businesses in our organization, more than 3,200 people that we're working with in WEBA. And now, we have 30 different programs that we're operating, including the ones that you see here. So, we're really excited about the continued investment, and we appreciate that. We try to stretch every dollar. We love the Level Up Program to help move female leaders forward. It's been extremely successful, and lots of promotions and raises and all those kinds of things, and so, we're committed to that. WEBA is now over 50% female. Super exciting. We have lots of entrepreneurs and young entrepreneurs, and lots of variety of people. And so, the Startup Plus community is really exciting. We've had lots of businesses involved, really helping them grow and scale, and they need help with everything from the basics of how to read a financial, to how to, how to do sales and marketing. And so, that Startup Plus community has been really successful. And the new Business Forward Program, come by and check us out in the lower level of the Ruffin Building. We do have our new Small Business Resource Center, and we have five, because of your investment, we have five early-stage startups that are now in there, that are taking advantage of resources that WEBA has and programs we have, and then providing with additional resources such as CPA services and legal services. And so, and we have everything from AI to virtual reality, to engineering, to robotics, and so, it's super exciting what we're able to do there. And so, that's exciting. And of course, the And of course, the research, and this is extremely important. And the research that we've had so far has really helped inform these new programs and that it's something that we're going to continue to dive deeper into. And stay tuned because we're going to be packaging all this research together to not only help us figure out what sort of new programs and what other resources, what other small business resources we need to provide, but we're going to be packaging that together and putting out annually the WEBA Small Business Report. And we're really excited about that and I think this is a game changer. And so we're really excited to really make a shift at WEBA to, now that we have more than 700 small businesses to provide, to band together with all the organizations, but to provide more small business resources to small business. And, you know, that's what the net jobs come from, you know, that's where most of the, so many of the metrics that we're looking to measure come from and the impact that small business has in our community. It shapes our community. It's part of the environment and it's so important. And so sincerely, on behalf of the organization and all of the people involved in WEBA, just want to thank you all for all of the continued investment in small business and just super excited tonight as we've celebrated with NEXUS and with the Create Campaign and all of us together with your investment to help further growth in small business. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendell. Any comments from the bench? I see none. I will now open it up for public comment if anyone would like to speak. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I know it's late. I know we want to go home, but I can't help myself. You know, I'm a huge WEBA fan. So thank you to staff for putting this together. I truly appreciate it. Thank you to WEBA for all you do. Certainly very impressive. You're doing great things and I'm hearing about you and I love the fact that you have data. You're data-driven. You are making this an easy vote because you're showing us what you're doing and that's really impressive. I personally love the women program. I got to speak at the women's luncheon packed room. I don't think there was an empty seat in the room and have made connections with several of the women who came up to me afterwards. I say this every time that you come for this contract, we cannot cut our way into prosperity. We have to grow our economy and when the majority of our economy is small businesses, we have to do everything that we can do to support our businesses and industries, especially our independent businesses. So thank you for all you do. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I see no further comments. I will just close out by saying, as I started when NEXUS spoke this evening, this ecosystem is really what I am most hopeful for. It is one of our top four priorities, crime, streets, economic development and homelessness. And you closed it out with economic development. And I'm just grateful that on Friday, I got to attend a graduation for the Sparrow Program at WSU's Barton School of Business. That is one step. Then we see what's happening at Create, also at Empower, at WEBA, at The Chamber, at NEXUS. That's that ecosystem. And I don't see competition. I see collaboration and that's what I'm hopeful for. I love that people are seeing where they can fit best and how to leverage each other better. And I think that that will help us grow Wichita and that's exactly what we need because Wichita is open for business and the private sector creates jobs and you are the ones that help us do that. Government doesn't do that. So thank you very much for the good work to Christina and your staff at WEBA in supporting those entrepreneurs and those small businesses because we need both small and large businesses to continue to thrive here in Wichita. So it gives me great honor to again, move that the City Council approve the Business Service Agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second and any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Ms. Clerk, please call the next item.
Change in council meeting schedule.
Mayor, I have this item just real brief for you. You have a, what would normally be a consent agenda scheduled for August 26, 2025. However, we'd like to convert that into a regular meeting so you can conduct your final budget hearing. That'll allow you to have four hearings and still allow us to meet the state requirements for filing. So that the meeting time would stay at 9:00 AM, just go to a regular meeting.
Further questions? I did ask this question during agenda review so that people are aware. Again, this is our first evening time meeting for 2025. There are three more opportunities and those dates currently are slated for June 3rd, August 7th and November 6th, and they all will start at 6:00 PM. I see no questions. We'll open it up for public comment. I see no public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock. I move that the council approve the change to the council meeting schedule, adding a regular meeting for a budget hearing in place of a consent agenda meeting at 9:00 AM on August 26, 2025 and authorize the necessary signatures. Councilmember Johnson.
Sorry, Mayor, I hit the button too late. Did you say November 6th? Is that a Tuesday? Or is that a Thursday? Is that election day?
I think it's due to the election, right?
Due to the election.
Yeah, but if it's Tuesday, that would...
You're right. So the election is on November 4th for the general. Therefore, the evening meeting will be on November 6th, which is a Thursday, not a Tuesday, but it is printed already on our schedules. Thank you very much for pointing that out. So again, it's Tuesday, June 3rd, Tuesday, August 7th and Thursday, November 6th. I have a motion and a second by Vice Mayor Johnston. Sorry, Councilmember Ballard.
That's okay. I just have a question. Maybe it's a dumb one. Sorry, it's late. Why are we not just doing it like on the next Tuesday and doing it on a Thursday? I'm just curious.
Mayor, traditionally, the last few years, when we would have a night meeting, I think we've had it on the Thursday after the election.
Okay. Carry on.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, can you please open the roll? Motion passes seven zero. Ms. Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
We'll start with Councilmember Appointments, beginning with Councilmember Glasscock.
No appointments.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to reappoint to the District One Advisory Board Lawanda DeShager and Joseph Tex Dozier and then appoint Rachel Mastio to the District One Advisory Board.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to reappoint Joshua Sebenoller to the District Advisory Board. Joshua Sebenoller, Mark Baker, Brian Irwin, William Washburn, Lisa Tatum, Zachary Gingrich-Gaylor, Sergio Nahara, Tom James, Scott Lucas and Angela Martinez. And I would like to appoint Renee Boggs to the Sustainability Board. And I'll give you a copy of these.
I see no further board appointments. I will move to approve the board appointments. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. We will now have Councilmember Comments. Beginning with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I've talked to, I believe, all my colleagues, at least briefly about this. And I've begun the conversations with people in the community regarding a common consumption area in Delano along Douglas from the river to Seneca. I have talked to Councilwoman Ballard about it pretty significantly, the Delano Business Association, dozens of other businesses down Delano, the Neighborhood Association, the Neighbor Association Leaders, Delano United, the Chief of Police and also the Wichita Police Department. I've also shared it publicly that I had the intention of proposing this from the bench, as well as multiple news agencies on social media, et cetera. And about a 200 to one positivity, I thought, felt comfortable coming before the bench and asking staff if they could work on a ordinance that would allow a common consumption area in Delano along the river from, on Douglas down to Seneca. We looked at both alleys and then also extending to the Ball Stadium. Obviously, we can look at maps and the process of crafting an ordinance. Topeka has a really successful ordinance. They have two or three common consumptions right now. Johnson County has nine. Winfield has one. Hayes has one. It's either Andover or Augusta has one, so it's not unprecedented in the state. The state actually allowed the permissible use of it most recently in 2023. That would allow these areas where cars, where there would be a car driving down the middle of the road, they would allow the areas on the sidewalks. So it's pretty new for municipalities to consider this. So I would like staff to look at moving forward with this.
I will continue with public comment, sorry, with Councilmember Comment, Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to encourage everyone to come out and look at the West Link Library before it's officially opened. Officially open on Monday, the 24th. However, you can get a preview of it on the 22nd. My wife is fixing breakfast, so it'll be good. And 9:00 AM at the West Link Library on the 22nd. So hope to see everyone.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I too am excited to learn more about a potential common consumption area. We are hopeful that if all goes according to plan and we can come up with something that is favorable for everyone, that we could potentially do it by summer. So that is really exciting. I have a couple more announcements. I am doing my District Six Coffee on Saturday from 9:00 to 10:00. We're having biscuits and gravy if anybody's interested. And then after that, about 10:30, we're going to meet at 13th and Broadway and do a Broadway corridor cleanup and try to get all the way to Central and then go over to the Multi-Agency Center and do some trash pickup in that area. Also, just like to thank everybody for coming out to the Delano St. Patrick's Parade and also the St. Pat's Church Parade. I think they could definitely feel the love after the unfortunate vandalism that happened at the church over this past weekend. So if you could just keep them in your thoughts and prayers, I know that they would appreciate it.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Following Councilmember Ballard, it's like announcements at the end of mass sometimes. So we got them all out of the way. I did have 11:45 on the pool, so you guys don't mind if I filibuster for like an hour here?
I'm 10:30. I'm going to win.
Oh, let me expedite this then real quick. There's something I just do want to speak about from the heart and it's, we have lost two children in my district in the last couple of weeks because of misplaced and irresponsible use of firearms. A seven-year-old and a one-year-old. So I know in the past WPD and council, we've worked with the community to provide gun safes for your car. I know a lot of the gun shops around here have also participated in a lot of events to give away gun safes and whatnot. And if we, we have a right, a Second Amendment right, but we also have a responsibility to protect our children. And I say this as a gun owner myself. So I just want to take every opportunity. I've already spoken about it at neighborhood associations. There's no earth be where we can compare separate policies with or separate desires to actually get this message out. So one thing I just encourage my colleagues to speak about at neighborhood meetings, district breakfasts and whatnot, whatever event you're at, is proper training and proper storage for firearms because, again, it's difficult to see the pictures of the young children that we are losing and it affects all of us up here. It affects everybody in our community. So we got to offer more than thoughts and prayers. We got to be proactive in getting the message out about being responsible with our firearms. And the children and their families are all never far from our hearts. And so we, again, let's do what we can to protect them. That's all.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate that message. Councilmember Hoheisel, I just had three, four things. One, I took a picture of this. It's been open for a while, but progress being made in the food desert in District One. The Dollar General Market on 21st and Puyatt does have fresh meat and fresh produce. I went in there and looked at it myself. Looks pretty good. So want to encourage everybody in Northeast Millair, Matlock Heights, Power, Neighborhood, anywhere in that area to go use the store. It's a resource that I know for years, they told me personally, no. And now I see it there. So since it's there, we got to use it. So hopefully, we can get people there. Vice Mayor Johnston, talk about West Link. Maya Angelou Branch Library is reopened. It has new hours. So hopefully, we can get more folks there. Rockwell is closed right now for construction, so everybody go to Maya Angelou. New hours are Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM and Sunday, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. So great place to go check out. The expansion looks great. All the vibrant colors are in there. Not everything is done just yet, but it is open. But when you go in there, you'll see it looks completely different than it used to. So hopefully, folks will go in there, get your library card or get your newly designed library card and check it out. And then always want to push Warp. I still get people reaching out to me about suspended driver's license, so want to encourage people to check out the Warp program here at the City of Wichita. If you or someone you know has a suspended driver's license, reach out. Our team here is awesome. They will help you. And if you go back and look at one of our District One breakfasts, we did have Nate come out and give a wonderful presentation about how that program works and invite people in there. So those three things and also in the pool, I was 10:45. So if somebody else gets on the board and talks for about 10 minutes, I'm winning.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you. I have two last questions or two last comments and they're just going to be very quick, so don't worry about it. Regarding solar regulations, the county's been expressing where we are in that. Do we have an update or is it fully on the county to answer where we are with the UGA?
Fully on the county at this point. The mayor signed a letter. We passed it on. They acknowledged receipt of the letter. So they should be working with planning staff to bring an item forward for their to review.
Okay. I will be, reach out to our counterparts of the county. Also, just have a brief comment regarding processes for proclamations. I'd be interested in maybe a workshop in the future regarding how we handle proclamations. Often, we get them via email and once they get four votes, we quit talking about them and we usually don't get reminder emails after four votes. I think we should probably have a conversation about how we vote on those from this body to make sure that they're public record. If we have questions, to edit proclamations as well. I just would be interested in the future. So maybe we look at a workshop of how we can handle those, have those on the record, but also make sure that the process is streamlined as well.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Definitely supportive of talking about that. I do have concerns about us editing proclamations that the public might submit, so maybe it's just us providing feedback, but definitely having the conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Hoheisel. I will just close out by saying thank you to the City of Wichita staff and all the individuals who came out to the State of the City address. It was my first since taking office last year on January 8th, 2024. I'm very appreciative that as a community, we were able to hear some of the wins and challenges in the City of Wichita, learn more about local government, but also talk about the priorities, which again, are crime, streets, economic development and homelessness. I also wanted to say thank you to Senior Services. Councilmember Tuttle went out and served for Meals on Wheels this morning, as well as I, and I'm very appreciative of the work that Senior Services provides for our community. They're funded in part by donors, but also by Sedgwick County. So wanted to let people know that you can still volunteer. They need volunteers for Meals on Wheels and they also need more individuals to know that that resource is available for Senior Services. And last but not least, I also wanted to say thank you actually to Sedgwick County Investigations. I'm part of the EMCU Exploited Missing Children's Unit Board. And today, I had an opportunity to go over to Sedgwick County and look at investigations. And I know that one of the topics we did talk about was the unfortunate incidents regarding children having access to guns and not having a proper box or proper methods to safeguard those weapons. those weapons. So I'm hopeful that Chief Sullivan, I know, is working hard in trying to address this back to education. And really, this is last, I promise. I just wanted to welcome all the individuals who will be coming to Wichita for the NCAA first and second rounds. This is a welcoming and respectful community, and I am so grateful that our community will put its best foot forward for the guests that are coming from all around the country for the NCAA basketball tournament. And again, good luck to all the college athletes and the teams. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I also would like to welcome everyone who goes to Intros Bank Arena to District One here in Wichita.
All right. 10:31. I will move to adjourn this meeting. I did. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Ms. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes six to one. I said 10:33. It's 10:31.